Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 11th, 2018 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It's a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. In a minute, we will have a moment of silence to mark the anniversary of 9/11 and the people who lost their lives that day, among them Jean Rozier. I think we all wake up on this day with a sort of heaviness with regard to the emotions centered around today. And as I sit here and I see Breggy, our school committee student rep, it's not lost on me that our current senior class were mostly born in 2000 and 2001. So since we serve kids K through 12+, it means we're pretty close to the point where all of our students are living in a post-9/11 world. It's really all they've ever known. So to honor Jean, a 1995 LHS graduate, a young woman of 24, who died that morning serving as the youngest member of the flight crew on American Airlines Flight 11 out of Boston, I would say remember her as someone who competed academically and athletically, but more importantly, she loved to laugh, learn, and experience all life has to offer. So I would encourage all students, whether in the high school now or down the road, spend some time looking at the mural of Jean above the pool and speak her name so that she's never forgotten. Let her life not be defined by the tragic events this day 17 years ago, but by the joy and beauty that she brought to the world. So please join me now in observing a moment of silence for Jean and all the other victims Thank you. Oh, I was about to turn this over to the clerk for correspondence.
Yes.
But Stephanie is probably pulling into the parking lot right now. So I will just mention that the following correspondence will be recorded. An invitation from Long Meadow Community Television regarding their open house, which is scheduled for Thursday, September 13th. Since that's the only correspondence, we can just move on to the approval of the minutes. And we have several recommended motions, if anyone would like to read those.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 14th, 2018 school committee meeting as presented.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes. If you want, I suppose you can group the two remaining, if you wanted to, and just do one vote, if that makes sense.
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 22nd, 2018 school committee meeting as presented, as well as the August 27th, 2018 school committee meeting as presented.
Second? Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes. We can move on to visitor comments, and we have none this evening. School committee announcements and recognitions. Does anyone have anything that they would like to offer as we kick off the school year? I'll say good luck to all our sports teams and all of our elementary kids who are participating in the walking school bus. That's always exciting for them. So our business with guests tonight, we will start off with our school climate data. And Ms. Shelley Warren is here, along with Mr. Paul McNeil. Shelley is the Substance Use Response Coordinator, and Paul is the Director of the Close Community Coalition, and they're going to present their findings to the school committee tonight. Welcome.
As Paul and Shelley settle in, we're going to use the projector here. I want to thank the committee for giving us the opportunity to share some very extensive data that we have relating to school climate. And so I use that phrase "school climate" fairly generally. To Shelley's credit and to the credit of the high school administration and now the middle school administration, we have been involved in collecting data that sort of centers around the youth risk behavior survey that you might be familiar with. And over the years, however, the high school has adapted that survey to try to dig a little deeper on some factors that are important to us. So that is a very, very extensive survey that is given annually to our high schoolers and again, now our middle schoolers. But tonight, I think we're mostly focused on the information relating to substance use, which is in Shelley and Paul's wheelhouse. Shelley is our Substance Abuse Response Coordinator and Paul as the Coordinator of the Drug-Free Community Grant and the Director of the Close Community Coalition. So I'll just fire up the projector. Thank you, Shelley and Paul.
Well, thank you for having us. And we have a long history before getting funding of collecting data, as Marty's mentioned. And it's been exciting in the past couple of years to be able to share our data, you know, more transparently within the community. And we really appreciate the partnership that the school committee and superintendent have had with our community coalition, because we wouldn't have been able to be successful in applying for the grant and collecting the data without that kind of support and partnership. So I know that in your packets, you have what we're calling our annual report, which we're hoping to disseminate to all parents within the next couple of weeks. And that's the first time that we'll have a complete document going home to parents that really kind of outline some of the trends in data that we've been collecting and connecting it to like initiatives that are both in the district and in the community through the coalition for substance use prevention. So I'm going to go through kind of a graphic, Paul and I are going to go through a graphically represented version of that packet for you and kind of touch on those highlights that we pulled out. For those of you who are not familiar, Marty mentioned that we've been surveying for a long time. 2013 was our first comprehensive survey at the high school. And we do all of our wellness classes, formerly known as PE classes, in March. So we do the survey at the same time each year. All classes are invited to participate, with students having the opportunity to opt out if they wish. And we have an over 90% participation rate in our high school, which is really phenomenal for sample size, et cetera. We use normed questions whenever available, so monitoring the future questions, youth risk behavior questions, Glisten questions, anything that we can kind of norm, we try to use that we can compare our data elsewhere. I frequently get asked, how do we know if the students are honest in the survey? And I could say, well, we know they're at least as honest as the students anywhere else are, so if we're using the same questions, we can still kind of compare. And Paul was great about helping us beef up our lie detector qualities in the survey this past year, which we won't say on television what those techniques are. But we have a few other, yeah, a few other measures in place. So we've been able to use our data more and share it more, and it's definitely one of the requirements of the grant, that we do that as well. So in the interest of that, let me move on. So we have a great set of protective factors in our community and in our school community specifically. I've pulled out some of these stats from our LHS seniors last year. 79% said they had an adult at school they were connected to. 90% had mostly As and Bs, reported that they were getting mostly As and Bs. 87% feel respected by staff. 92% feel they have peers that they fit in with at the school. 90% can go to their parents for help with a problem, and 83% have parents that they say have clear rules regarding alcohol use. Those are all great protective factors, you know, for our young people. And where we do have comparables, we're above the state comparables. So you'll notice on the slides, M-A-Y-R-B-S, which stands for Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So that's one of those standardized survey instruments that we compare to. Unfortunately, Massachusetts has not published data since 2015, so we're comparing our 2018 to 2015. So some things that may have changed for us might also have changed for the state, but they haven't reported yet. So we have to take the comparisons with a little bit of a grain of salt right now. And sometimes I'll have U-S-R-Y-R-B-S, and that's the national comparison of using the same survey instrument. Our top three substances of choice for students are alcohol, nicotine, and marijuana. So up on this chart, I use the abbreviation Ns, which stands for Electronic Nicotine Delivery Systems, AKA vapes, that you've, I'm sure, heard a lot about by now. So last year was the first time that nicotine surpassed marijuana and became our second drug of choice amongst our students. This is 30-day use, grades nine through 12. So in the green here, we have 35% reporting 30-day use of alcohol, 28% of nicotine delivery systems, electronic nicotine delivery systems, and 20% for marijuana. And the purple here is the state comparisons. So you can see that we are, whoops, ah, sorry about that, slightly above, and I'm sorry, these are for seniors, except for marijuana. And this is one where our marijuana stats have changed a lot in the past year, which you'll see in a little bit. And this is 2015 for the state. So I tend to think that, I don't know what the state's average is right now. All right, so we also look at our daily use patterns, and this to me is always interesting. Although we're concerned about high-risk behaviors that go with alcohol use and binge drinking in particular, we notice more of a pattern of habitual use with the Ns or the vapes. So 9%, this is all grades, 9% of our students reported daily or almost daily use of these devices, and 4% report daily or almost daily use of marijuana, as compared to 0.5% for alcohol. So those are behaviors that we're really concerned about because they are, you know, they can be habit-forming and have other negative impacts as a result of that. Our alcohol use trends, if you go back to when we first started collecting the data in 2013, we've improved since then, but you can see a little bit of an up and down in the chart. And last year was a year of an uptick, but the uptick doesn't take us back to our 2013 baseline, if you will. So some of that increase could be a cohort effect. But in here, the yellow line is 12th grade alcohol use in the past 30 days, and the red line is 12th grade binge drinking, which is four or more drinks in a row for a girl and five or more drinks in a row for a boy. So those are our 12th grade stats are the yellow and the red, and then our 10th grade stats are the green and the purple. And our pattern is basically that our students stay below state averages in most substance use behaviors until the senior year, and then they surpass in many of them. But alcohol in particular, they surpass with the biggest percent margin. So here, in the little bubble on the side, the 12th grade binge drinking rate was 28% compared to our 39% for the past 30 days. So that's one of the priorities that our coalition is identifying and looking at strategies, you know, strategies to combat.
Shelley, do you know where the, I'm sorry, I throw up.
Yep.
Where the 12th grade 30-day usage is at the state level, the non-binge?
So I believe that's in the packets.
Okay.
Which, I have back.
We can, okay.
Yeah, it's in the packet, but I didn't put it on this chart. We are above, I want to say we're above by five percentage points, I think, so I think it's around 50, 51. But we're above more significantly with the binge drinking than with the alcohol.
To all participating students reporting 30-day alcohol use, we also ask about which students have clear rules from their parents, which students were caught if they had been drinking, or what were the consequences? Were there few or no consequences for the students if they were caught by their parents? So this data point shows us that of the students who reported having drank in the last 30 days, 75% of them had clear rules. So that's still three-quarters of them having clear rules. So that doesn't mean clear rules in and of itself prevents drinking in the household. But if you see over on the lower right corner there, 87% of non-drinkers report clear rules about alcohol use. So that's about nine in 10. So it does matter greatly to have that in place, to have rules in place in the household. It's not everything. So the students who did drink and are reporting having drunk in the last 30 days, 45%, so almost half of them weren't ever caught by parents or law enforcement. And if you were caught, only about one in five report few or no consequences. So there's a significant power to the parents influencing their child's decisions around alcohol use.
Here's our history on 30-day marijuana use. And when I use the words, we're using the words 30-day, that's like a standard in these surveys, is if you've indicated that you've done something within the past 30 days, you're considered a current or regular user of that substance. That's why we always pull out the 30-day stats. So our 30-day marijuana use since 2013 has actually gone up. We had a very significant, in my opinion, increase from 2017 to 2018, which does coincide with legalization in Massachusetts. And you also see a gradual increase of our sophomore use from eight up to 13% from 2013 to 2018. So again, I'm speculating, but I think we know that states that liberalize their marijuana legislation do start to see a softening of perceptions, and then you see an increase in behaviors around these substances. So our data with marijuana kind of is in line with that. Unfortunately, the state hasn't published since 2015, so we're not sure how the state's data is changing as well. So as of 2015, state data, our seniors last year exceeded, you know, by quite a bit. But I'd be curious to see when they do publish. It takes them a longer time to process their data and to put it out, and they do it every odd year. So they do 2015, they'll probably publish the 2017 data sometime this year, and then we'll have a better comparison. We also asked our students what their negative, you know, if they had used marijuana in the past 12 months, which of the following side effects or consequences or impacts they might have noticed. And Paul, were you going to talk about this one, or was that?
I think you were going to take it.
I'm going to talk, okay.
The haziness is unironic.
I'll talk through the haziness, yeah. So, yeah. So 34%, the biggest side effect was being tired or unmotivated. 18% had coughing or breathing problems that they noted connected with their use. 17% said they spent too much money on it. 15% noticed procrastination, which would go with feeling tired or unmotivated. And 11% had difficulty remembering things. Yet we also asked if you felt it impacted your schoolwork, and the vast majority said, oh, no. But when you look at these things, like if you're tired or unmotivated and you're procrastinating and you can't remember things, you know, it seems like all that could not help but have an impact on the schoolwork. So when we also did a correlation with grades reported and regular use, 30-day use, we did find that there is an impact, or at least a correlation, between using marijuana regularly and having lower grades. So 17% of 30-day users reported having mostly Cs or Ds as compared to 5% of non-marijuana users. So you could see when we split out the data that there was a difference in the grades being earned by those two sets of students. We also see a difference in whether or not the parents had clear rules around it, similar to what Paul noted before with the alcohol. Not being caught, we have more students who are regular marijuana users not being caught as compared to alcohol, and it is more difficult for parents, I think, to monitor and detect an alcohol use. And again, minor or no consequences if they were caught. So those are all kind of risk factors there with the monitoring and supervision.
On the clear rules, is that like, does it go further than just saying, does your parents have clear rules as opposed to?
We don't ask what the rules are.
Like a conversation, or are they perceived, like, I guess my question is, are they more perceived clear rules versus?
We do have two different questions.
Yeah.
One is, have you, have your parents had a conversation with you about the substance? And then we ask, do your parent have clear rules? So.
And there's the consequences question, do they have clear consequences? So they're all broken up.
Okay.
But they're not super specific, they're pretty general.
We don't, yeah, we don't try to split out as to what the rules are, because that could vary greatly, obviously.
This is the driving slide. So something that's been concerning for local law enforcement, and this data point was really useful for us in conversations with our local police department, was how many students are reporting driving around under the influence of marijuana? I think people were concerned about that, in particular with the loosening of the laws around marijuana use. And as our data showed that seniors at LHS who have reported marijuana use in the last 30 days, 19% report having driven a car themselves, that's about one in five in the last 30 days. And then 36% report being a passenger, so that's about one in three, in a car with someone who has been using marijuana. So that's kind of went in line with what people were concerned about. And it's in line also with what the chief said they've seen as far as pulling students over for perceived impairment or concerned impairment. And with alcohol, it's lower than marijuana. I think the perception of harm is much higher for alcohol, for good reason. But we still see almost one in 10 students that have reported using alcohol in the last 30 days, report being driven by someone who's been drinking alcohol, 5% report being the driver. 16% of seniors report using marijuana while driving around, and as opposed to 3% of seniors report drinking while driving around. So these are the, this was really useful information when I was asked to speak to all of the shifts at the local police department a couple months ago. They just, they're just doing their job diligently every day and don't have time to sort of step back and look at this data that we have, so it was really useful for them to say, huh, I had a hunch. And it's not just their gut anymore, they can say, yeah, we know about one in three people that are using marijuana are being driven by someone who's used. So that was really useful in building that relationship with the law enforcement department and advocating for them to continue to train their officers in drug recognition expertise, which is something that not every department is doing. And that's something that we're committed to supporting financially and programmatically in the future, with the local PD.
Right. And it's something I think that all the states that have legalized recreational marijuana are grappling with, is how to address this, because there is no way to test for driving impaired with marijuana yet that's accepted in the courts. So we are in this limbo right now with respect to that, so. And it's actually one of our goals in the coalition is to help fund efforts in the police department to, you know, get them ready for, you know, stronger enforcement around the driving impaired. So that's an ongoing, you know, an ongoing challenge and a project that we're going to continue to work on with them.
This is the Power of Parents, Peers, and Knowledge slide. So regular drinkers and non-drinkers, as we see here, the red is the non-drinkers. So parents feeling that it is wrong or very wrong for students to drink, we see that there's significantly more non-drinkers for parents who think it's wrong, and that when students know that their parents think it's wrong. Friends, if your friends think it's wrong for you to drink, you see the dramatic difference, 50% of non-drinkers report that, as opposed to only 6%. If you find yourself in a peer group where a lot of people are normally drinking on the weekends, you know, very few of those groups have friends that don't think it's wrong. So I hope I said that right. As far as you, your individual belief in thinking it's wrong, obviously, non-drinkers have a stronger belief that it's wrong to drink alcohol. And then the risk, moderate or great risk, again, we see non-drinkers thinking it's riskier. So it's important for our educational efforts when we're starting in elementary and middle school, and we're talking about safe and healthy decisions, to share the risk. So in particular with marijuana in the last few years, students and adults thinking, well, it's less risky than alcohol in a lot of ways, so it must be safe. And we're trying to share the message that it might be less harmful, but it's certainly not harmless. So it's pretty powerful that parents and educators and peer groups know the risks and how many people think it's wrong. This is student perceptions versus actual use. This is very powerful information for us when we are creating our social norms campaigns, which are positive social norms campaigns. We have an example of that coming up. But where we, it's something where we take the perceived behavior of a peer group. So if a lot of students are thinking, you know, for example, drinking, oh, 72% of my peers are drinking alcohol, when the reality is it's 27%. And you can see the little senior spider legs there for 44%, 27, and then 25 across the board there. But the huge gap in perception from 72 to 27 shows us, man, we need to increase these students' perceptions of their actual, real, healthy behaviors of their peers. And it's the same with marijuana, it's the same with e-cigarettes. When you think most of your peers are doing something that's unhealthy, but most actually are not, it's really important for us to address that gap. And that's what we do with the Social Norms Campaign that we'll see on the next slide. So this is something that was developed by the Students Against Destructive Decisions Group this year. They were really influential in taking the data points that we, we had tons and tons of data, but they helped us sort of wean out the most valuable data that they thought their peer groups and their fellow students should know about. And one of them was binge drinking, because we have a significantly higher rate of binge drinking in Long Meadow, especially for seniors, than across the state and nationally. And so they wanted to address the fact that 82% of students here actually do not binge drink. And this is the design they came up with. Chief was a last-minute decision, but people seemed to like it. And the curiosity and interest in why sheep has come up quite a bit, and I honestly don't know, other than the idea of maybe following the flock or not wanting to follow the flock. But the cool thing is that everyone was reading them. So students are comparing their own behavior to data points like this when they see them sort of plastered across the school, which was the case in the last month of school last year.
One area that we have seen great progress in is the misuse of opiates, opiate prescription pills. So misuse being using something not prescribed for you or not as prescribed for you. So we first asked about this in 2013, and at that point, 10% of our seniors reported misuse of opiates, and we are down to 1% holding that for the past two years, which is a wonderful improvement in that area, given the opiate crisis. And we continue, both at school and as a coalition, to really tackle the opiate crisis and the impact of that, you know, in many ways, but we're trying to hold this and keep that down. An area of concern that has popped up a little bit is stimulant use. So you see, we had a spike in 2015 and then a great decline. 2017 was our banner year for low numbers for all of our prescription pills. But last year, we had a bump up on the stimulants. So the stimulants refer to Adderall, Concerta, medications that are commonly prescribed for ADHD. So misusing those prescriptions. And we do meet the profile of a community at risk for that, because it tends to be greater in communities that have a very high-performance culture. And it's considered like, you know, the steroid of academics are these stimulants. So that's something for us to look at and to continue to try to find ways to combat. We've also seen an increase in sedatives, which I know I have heard more about nationally as well. Those would refer to anti-anxiety medications. So the ones that we hear about most commonly would be Plonopin, Ativan, Xanax, being used recreationally or not as prescribed. Wow. We are still well below the state average. I put the M-A-Y-R-B-S at the bottom there, which is 14%. So we are still well below, but I feel like one student is one student too many when it comes to the risks with these prescription pills.
This next data point had to do with managing stress. Students report in focus groups in a lot of anecdotal conversations that drug use and alcohol use is in response to a lot of stress and anxiety in their lives. And so one of the questions we asked was, well, how do you relieve stress in ways that are potentially healthy or unhealthy? But most students say that they listen to music. And we'll get to a fun Social Norms Campaign poster on the next slide. But then follow closely by exercise, and then talking with friends, so having a positive connection with your social or peer group, all the way down to mindfulness meditation, yoga. Taking a nap is very powerful, obviously, and hopefully not during school. And then drugs is about 10% of students reporting, that's what they do, is relieve stress and anxiety. And something I didn't mention earlier about the Social Norms Campaign, actually, if we can go to the next slide. So when you address the gap in perception, so when students think that most students are engaged in unhealthy behaviors, when the reality is that most students are not engaged in unhealthy behaviors, but engaged in very healthy, sustainable behaviors, over time, you do see that behavior change, and you see healthier behavior increasing. That's a National Registry of Evidence-Based Practices, it's an evidence-based practice for social groups in high school settings and in the community setting. And that's something we've been taking on here the last year, and we'll continue to do so. So this was the lovely Bryn Cartelli, who obviously won The Voice, and she, we were literally designing this poster the night before she won, and so when she won it, it was even more, I think, effective, that this went up across the school the next day, because most students in LHS do relieve stress by listening to music. And so she was really excited to, her mom gave me the thumbs up while she was driving around to like a million interviews the next day. So we were excited to share this. And we also shared a little bit of the data for students about other ways that students relieve stress. But this has been a successful way for young people in the school to understand the relationship between stress relief in healthy ways and substance use.
It's funny, we had permission to use this in a limited way, so it went up in the school for two weeks, and it came down, and it was replaced by the sheep poster with the binge drinking. But I had people asking me, almost like they're vintage, you know, like, do you have any of those?
Do you have any more of those?
Yes. No, they're lock and key. So last year was the first time that we surveyed in the eighth grade, and our grant does require that we collect data in eighth grade as well. So it was our first time, we were very excited. It was a much smaller survey, so it's really our learning, you know, our learning year. We did find our substance use was below state averages across the board in eighth grade, so there was no one area that, you know, really stood out as needing attention. And they, 80% reported an adult at school they could talk to about a problem, 85% said there was somebody they felt they fit in with at school, 20% said they had felt bullied on school property in the past 12 months. We don't have the state comparison, they don't publish it at all, but the national one- one was 22% for eighth graders, so we were coming in at below that. So there wasn't anything that was jumping out, but we met with the principals and looked at some of that data, and what we came out with were some questions that we want to add in for this year to refine our understanding of what's going on with those data points. For example, with alcohol, we actually think we might have gotten a false positive from a number of our students based on ceremonial use of alcohol at, for example, a Seder. So, and it was students who kind of gave me some of that feedback in one of the groups I was in. And so we're going to make the language more explicit than it is on the standardized survey because of some of the particulars of our community and see if we don't see that number actually drop. We still were below the state average, but we felt it was probably higher than our eighth graders are actually using, so. So it was a very useful process and it's still a work in progress on the eighth grade. We have a number of prevention initiatives in the district, which I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, are aware of. I'm just going to highlight some of those. We have, over the past probably three to four years, increased coordination of the K-12 substance use prevention programming in the district, and receiving the grant has certainly given a boost to that as well. The life skills health curriculum has been implemented in elementary and middle schools starting this year. Elementary was last year, and we had a youth opioid prevention grant that we were using for the elementary, and then some of our federal grant funding has helped us with the middle schools. We've had an increased emphasis on social emotional learning, and I think that's really due to the focus coming from here and from the administration on that topic. Increased social, I'm sorry, increased school adjustment counselor staffing in all schools, which has been phenomenal to have every school have a full-time school adjustment counselor present to access behavioral health counseling in the school. We have a T.A.R.W.A.R.S. tobacco prevention program that's been in fifth grade for probably about four years, and that's in partnership with Western New England University. We have graduate pharmacy students who come in and implement that for us for free. We've implemented medicine safety lessons in first grade utilizing the school nurses. We have added a what is a drug lesson in fifth grade, which Paul and I went out and facilitated last year. We use high-status peers in our eighth-grade health classes, students who are in SAD or Pure Leadership who go and join me for lessons in the eighth grade and talk about how to navigate high school without using substances. We've had recovery panels in the senior wellness classes for the past three years, and that includes people who are in the Western Mass Recovery and Wellness Center and also from Learn to Cope in our area. And we have added substance use prevention lessons at all grade levels in the high school as a part of the wellness classes. Positive Social Norming Campaign, we really started to roll out last year, which Paul mentioned, and that's going to continue. We have our next set ready to go, and we'll be kind of doing those in two-week bursts for each message, you know, starting next week probably. We also have added info on the screens, the monitors, in the high school as well. So we have stats, whoops, stats up there about like the risks of driving impaired, for example, with alcohol versus marijuana. We did a quiz in the school last year related to that and then supported it with monitor information. And then obviously we have ongoing parent engagement, both through special programs, through Safe Homes, Close is sponsoring an event coming up very soon, which I'll let Paul talk about.
Well, I will say, what is a drug isn't exactly what it sounds like. It's an introduction to things that maybe fifth graders didn't necessarily know were substances, so like caffeine, especially in caffeine-based drinks. What were some of the other surprises?
Yeah, we only cover legal drugs that they have a lot of, like, exposure to. So we did energy drinks, you know, caffeine coffee, soda, we did the nicotine, the ends, the vapes. We talked about alcohol and now marijuana because that's legal as well. So we basically showed them examples of things, and you ask, like, is this a drug or is it not a drug? And it's really interesting to see fifth graders be like, well, no, that's not a drug because my teacher's drinking that right now, a cup of coffee. You know, so we talked about drugs have an impact on the nervous system and how's, you know, hold up a bottle of aspirin, is this a drug, you know, and why or why not? What's a safe use of this product? Why, and it's really great discussions with the fifth graders, and it's a pleasure, we're so eager to talk about it, and it's eye-opening for them, especially the energy drinks, I think, because we have them actually compare the caffeine content in the different drinks compared to an actual cup of coffee from Dunkin' Donuts and how many serving sizes are in that can, and it's kind of consumer, consumer health awareness, you know, for them, so. Been good.
Coming up, we have screening and brief intervention and referral to treatment implemented by the nursing staffs in grade seven and nine. We, that basically shows us what students are most at risk for potential current substance use and/or potential future substance use for grades seven and nine. We have a parent training coming up September 23rd. If you want to learn more information, go to our website, closecommunity.org. It's in motivational interviewing, which is a different way of talking about really difficult subjects with your teenager. And the improbable players are a group out of the Boston area, and they really tackle different issues of substance use from a recovery lens. All the performers are folks living in long-term recovery. That performance will be for 11th and 12th graders on October 10th, and it's going to be almost a three-hour morning where it's not just a presentation, but a lot of workshops and a lot of discussion on how to build and develop positive peer networks and support systems for each other. The show that they're going to be doing for us, in particular, especially in Long Meadow, is Running on E., which is in response to that sort of high-stress academic and sports culture that we hear a lot about and see a lot about here.
So that October 10th day is a day, I think they started last year at the high school, it's really a day where they just sort of do a timeout at the high school, and they'll spend a lot of time with kids at each grade level doing a lot of sort of culture-building activities. And so the improbable players is part of that, but there's activities that they're lining up for the other grades as well, so.
The implementation of life skills, which is sort of the gold standard nationally for an evidence-based prevention curriculum on substance prevention, that's going to be at the middle school level again this year with the help of Sue Burton and the curriculum and wellness crew here in Long Meadow Public Schools, and the wellness teachers at the middle school. They've been incredibly onboarded, and so it's been really exciting. I'm really tired. I'm a father of a baby. Community survey in focus groups this fall. We're continuing to do qualitative assessment gathering through focus groups in key stakeholder interviews, focus groups with youth, focus groups with different parenting groups like the Safe Homes Network, and we're going to be implementing a community survey for the entire community of anyone who resides in Long Meadow. So that's coming up this fall, so stay tuned for that. That's going to give us a ton of normalizing data around parenting practices and community practices. Narcan availability is in the school health offices, just like you'll find in EpiPen, you will see Narcan is available as well. That's something that's newer in the last year or two, and so we wanted to make sure that it is not a stigmatized thing to have access to Narcan in case of an unintentional opioid overdose. And pain management, there's going to be a pain management presentation for student athletes and their families. That'll be sometime in the fall, we haven't shored up a date quite yet, but that's something that parents and community members have really shown interest in is, well, what if my kid injures their leg and we're so afraid of opioids, what do we actually do to manage this kid's pain? And that's a great question. And so we have a couple of phenomenal leaders in the community, Dr. Al McKee, who is a pain doctor with Bay State, and Gila Sabetti, who is a pharmaceutical, a doctor of pharmaceutical studies at, at, no, Western New England, not Bay Path, Western New England University. So we got a lot coming up. Again, there's more information on our website, closecommunity.org, if you did want to receive more info about that.
And that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, I will open it up to questions.
I think we hit on everything that's in the packet too, you know, if you have any feedback on the packet that we'd like to send out, we'd love to, you know, hear that as well.
So this is all really good things that you have planned here, but are there any direct actionable items coming out of the data?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
So are you using the data to create action plans on?
All the time.
Is this what drives this particularly?
Yes.
Or is the data driving you directly to one particular action?
Yeah, we all, it's always data-driven, and in fact, the grant is completely data-driven, so you have to develop your action plan. When we applied for the grant, I'm going to speak as a coalition first.
Okay.
When we applied for the grant, you actually had to have an action plan that was developed in connection with data, and then is supported and evaluated by data as you move forward. In fact, Paul and I just completed week three of our Coalition Academy training, and we learned all about developing these logic models, you know, out of the data specifically. So it is, but I will say even before the coalition was funded and created, we've used our data internally, so I've presented to health teachers for a number of years now, usually in the fall when we have PD time, and we look at, okay, so what are we seeing about the students? And then that really feeds directly back to them tweaking their health curriculums, which I view as like the mainline form of prevention, you know, for our students. And then we've tended to develop our, well, parent programs that I'm involved in here, apart from special programs, have tended to be in response to the data. So I did a parent night on vaping, once we started to see vaping emerge, we put out a vaping handout at the fall sports night this week, we put out a handout electronically last year. Once we started to see vaping data, we started to try to hit that educationally as much as possible in the community.
Okay, one follow-up.
I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. I guess, so then from a baseline perspective, how are we judging the efficacy of those programs?
So we can't say really, like, you know, oh, this one program changes the data, but we can look at how our data is changing over time. And I think that's, we certainly do collect data at some of our programs internally, and that helps to know whether or not people found it engaging, et cetera. But there, for any of these behaviors, there are so many factors that go into it. So for example, we could have been, you know, talking about marijuana all day long, and we've had a major marketing campaign in our state at the same time. So you can't really tease out and say whatever we did is the cause of one thing or another because, you know, it happens in a community context.
Awesome, thank you.
It's difficult.
Appreciate it. Well, if I could say one more thing, the measures are dynamic, so like, not all of the data that drives our work is found in this survey. For example, like, if we have one graduation party where there's alcohol present this spring, it's a dramatic improvement from the two that were last year, maybe the three that were three years ago. So it's like, those sorts of measures, we're keeping a close eye on and working really closely with law enforcement, really closely with the parenting groups, and yeah, it's driving all of our data. Because if we know binge drinking is an issue, then we need to prevent these larger gatherings where binge drinking is normalized. It's not just the surveys themselves, but we, you know, we keep a close eye on what's changing in the data, and we don't really work on an issue unless it is a condition here that's rooted here that's an issue.
Awesome, thank you.
Karen, I saw your hand.
This, thank you so much for this presentation, this was so informative, and just to jump on Armon's point, I was thinking the same thing, and I noticed and I wrote, I tried to write every time you said, this data informed this decision. And so, you know, I pulled out, you said something about informing the local PD and, you know, partnering with them and things like that. Just from a parent's perspective, that information is so incredibly helpful. You know, when you get all of this information and these charts and this data, you're sort of like, okay, but when you hear, right, but when you hear, oh, this is what they're doing with that, so just something to think about when you're putting out the data to highlight some of the things that it is informing this decision, you know what I mean?
Well, even the whole social norms campaign.
Right.
Was completely out of the data.
Right, and I, you know, I wrote that down as something that you had noted, but even just to have like a little asterisk in the bottom to let parents know, you know, this is what we're doing with the information, because I think it's helpful to know, you know, as a member of the community, you know, this is great, I love how they're looking at it, and I love to know what they're doing with it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Greggy.
Hi. I like the social norms campaign. Like, my one concern about it is like, with the posters, like, you're kind of like implying that if you're like different, then it's a bad thing, which in this case it is, but like, you think there's a way to like put it out there so it's not like so like negative on like the minority?
Yeah, I'm actually, it's, I'm glad you brought that up because one thing we are and we're really concerned about is we want to focus on the positive behavior. So it is interesting you brought that up because you're talking about the sheep in particular?
Yeah.
Yeah, the sheep was concerning because it's like, do you want to be one of the sheep? And in this case, if the sheep are all doing really healthy, fun, inclusive things, then the answer is yes. But it's a great thing to think about. I think that was the one thing we were almost not going to use sheep for, and so we're going to keep considering that. We want to keep it positive. The thing you want to avoid is like projecting and plastering the school with really negative behaviors and negative statistics, saying, you know, be afraid of this, fear-based this, fear-based that. So that's not how these campaigns work, they're not effective that way. Thank you, that's helpful.
Anyone else have any follow-up? Melanie?
I would like to say that I'm not surprised, but I wish I was, that the numbers on marijuana have gone up. Sometimes I don't know what this, people in this state were thinking. I'm glad Long Meadow did not vote to approve marijuana use, but that doesn't surprise me at all, and hopefully it's just the excitement of it all and it will find, it will make its way back down, but.
Well, we've had great advocacy of our, in our Board of Health to keep retail shops out of town, and I can say in talking about norming, when I do the fifth-grade lessons, I can, I'm glad that I can refer to our vote, you know, and say, you know, our, your parents, the majority of your parents did not vote for this, you know, and keep that message out there because it did not, and there was a wide margin in Long Meadow too. So it's nice for me to be able to refer to that vote, and because we had the vote that did not support it, we were able to have Beverly Herschorn block the retail very easily. I mean, we could have done it otherwise, but it would have taken another vote, et cetera. But, so we do have some strengths in our community related to that as well.
Yeah, and especially to not have the policy to, you know, to measure all the things you mentioned.
Right.
It's just really disappointing.
Yeah, the driving was really concerning. To me, that was the most concerning data point last year was the impaired driving.
Yeah, I think it's a lot easier to get rid of it and then.
Well, there's zero way to test for, for.
Exactly.
The effectiveness of the marijuana use on driving, there's no, there's no breathalyzer, there's no, what is it, ABV for THC, there's no, there's no breathalyzer.
Yeah.
And until they have one, it's sort of the Wild West of what to do.
Yeah, so it's approved first without those measures, which is, to me, just unbelievably.
Well, you mentioned in sort of, in a small way, you know, thank God Long Meadow didn't pass recreational marijuana, you know, sort of for-profit marijuana here in town. That's a monumental prevention measure, is to just have that policy in place, and so that's something I inherited when I took this position, and I was thinking, you know, it's such an immense prevention measure. So to have that sort of floodgate opened up for a community, it really does harm young people. And I think that whatever your relationship is with marijuana as an adult, you know, when you recreationalize, when you have, when you have a for-profit monetized industrialized market around an addictive drug, it hurts kids because that's who they have to target to have lifelong customers. So Long Meadow did an immense service for prevention, so thank you.
A lot worse on their brains than it is on adult brains.
Absolutely, yeah, and I think a lot of adults weren't thinking about that at all when they voted for it.
Yeah, disappointing.
I just had a couple of quick things that I pulled out of the Coalition report, the annual report, and they were just quick questions. In terms of the right-under-your-nose mock bedroom display, which I love at Long Meadow days, but I'm just curious if you consider maybe carrying that over and doing it like at a back-to-school night or a student athlete night, just because of that target audience? And I think it really is, it's really revealing to parents when you walk through that mock display. I did do it at Long Meadow days, and things that you think are not drug paraphernalia or, you know, overlook as common everyday items are really being used to, so I'm just wondering, I'm curious about that, if that's ever been considered.
We haven't discussed it, we haven't discussed it.
I think we would love to do it many more times throughout the year. It's a bit of a bear to set up and coordinate, but that doesn't mean you can't do it. Fortunately, there's an amazing group of volunteers in Enfield who have like a mobile unit that they can bring places, and they're just getting started in the last month to like, they are offering it whenever people are requesting it. So that's something we can definitely roll out, and we'd love to talk with folks about what nights over the years should we target. I think that's something we're really interested in.
Right, and my second follow-up would be, I guess it's in terms of like professional development, not with just the teachers, but maybe a community engagement piece with the parents as far as like the jeweling devices and what that actually looks like. So is there some type of training where the actual product is shown to teachers or could be shown to also parents? Because if your child isn't using it or if they are using it, like, I had to go online to the Jewel website, and I'm like, oh, this is like a USB port, every kid in class could have that like plugged right into their laptop. So that's kind of like educating yourself, but is there a way for us to kind of?
Well, I can tell you what we've done so far. I mean, last year I did a training for the high school staff, and where we actually passed around, you know, samples that we have confiscated and.
And we got them back.
Educated and got them back, and then we found many more after that training, you know, because the teachers did know, like, this is exactly what it looks like. know, because the teachers did know, like, this is exactly what it looks like.
Because students were involved in that as well, which I think that was really helpful.
Yeah, the whole, the whole staff, anybody who worked in the high school was involved in that. And, because we had an outside person come in and do some training, and then I had done an in-house thing for staff as well. We've sent out electronically to parents at the high school level, and I believe the middle school level as well, of like, you know, how to recognize-
One pager.
Yeah, one pager, and this is what it is, these are our concerns, and this is what it looks like, and with some links, you know, on there as well. So, and then we handed out actual hard copy flyers at the fall athletic night, with our stats on the vaping, and then what the concerns are, and they also had images of what the more common devices look like. So we have been, you know, we, we have been, and-
We're going to keep doing it.
Yeah.
And Mike Capitastos specifically, I said, you know, of all the substance use issues and the athlete, the life of a Long Meadow athlete, what's the number one issue on your mind? And he said, oh, vaping, like, quickly answered that question. And so we knew, like, oh, let's take advantage of this parents' sports meeting in the fall, to have everyone have an educational seat on what is vaping, how to recognize signs and symptoms, and it was just really helpful to have that information from him, and, and we're going to keep educating, keep informing, sharing that information.
Yes, and thank you for doing so. So important, so, so important. Anybody? Marty, you want to follow up?
Yeah, no, I, I think just to sort of maybe tie some of this together, I think, you know, the, the data has been used to inform professional development and inform health instruction, and what has been great to see, you know, has been taking that data to the next level and bringing it to the police department, as I said, bringing it to the Board of Health, as I mentioned, getting it to the athletic department, and sort of really doing that, that very purposeful outreach with the data, so that we're not just sort of sitting on it and holding it close, that we're, you know, being very purposeful and putting the data out there and letting parents understand what, what we're seeing, and then also inviting parents to give us that feedback as well. So as you can see, you know, Paul and Shelley, they're not shy, they're, they're always willing to meet with any community group or parent group that, that will listen, and they've done a great job with that very purposeful outreach, so we'll, we'll stick with it. Love the idea of the, you know, trying to recreate that, that bedroom, you know, in plain sight, under your nose, I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Have a great night.
All right.
Thank you.
So we can move on with our administrative reports, and we can start with, Marty, if you'd like to share your superintendent report?
Certainly, a few items for you. First, sort of acknowledge the professionalism and commitment of the staff and our students as they worked through the heat last week. It was, it was challenging. We're in pretty good shape relative to other districts, but certainly Glenbrook was oppressive. The staff hung in there. We managed to purchase a supply of box fans for every classroom. Mr. Mazza was our courier, thank you so much. Nick George identified a few at a, at a distant location in Connecticut, and so we, we made the trek down there and supplied the staff with those fans. It really, you know, honestly, you only provided a, you know, some measure of relief and comfort, but I think we, we wanted them to understand that we, we recognized their professionalism and the commitment of the kids through that week. Maintenance custodial staff were great in, in taking every step they could to keep the buildings cool as possible, and I think that week also gave us an opportunity to kind of review our own inclement weather response procedures, you know, typically those kick in in the wintertime, but we were able to have some conversations around how to respond to the heat. Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable last week, thanks to Karen Warren, Melanie Rothstein, and Fronen Monahan for joining me at that roundtable. The executive director of the MAS C, Glenn Kuchar, spoke to the group and talked a lot about budget adequacy and the funding formula, and I think it got me thinking a lot about, you know, what we could collectively do around school funding and advocating for a revised school funding formula, that, the one that goes into the foundation budget. Met earlier this week, or last week, with Tom Landers, the police chief, and representatives from the district attorney's office to discuss the need for a new memorandum of understanding between our three agencies. So that memorandum of understanding has been renewed, it probably will come up again, and I'll bring it back to the committee if and when there's some new language to reflect the role of the school resource officer. There's some new legislation that requires updated language in local MOUs. The local DA's office isn't quite comfortable with the model language that's out there, so, so we're still working on that, but we do have an MOU in place, and I can forward that to the committee by the end of the week. Also, thanks to Beth and the committee for recognizing today as a national day of service and remembrance, and would want you to know, would want the community to know that our schools each recognized this day in ways that were age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate. Had an opportunity to hear Tom Landers' address to the students over the PA, did a nice job asking for a moment of service, silence rather, and remembering the victims and the first responders and the other heroes of that day. So it was a poignant day, it's hard to believe that it's been 17 years, so. That's it. Oh, and then tomorrow morning, this is not in the written report, we have the, the school, walking school bus at our three elementary schools, so we'll be out, central office team will be out joining some of our students as they work, as they do the walking school bus, and if any school committee members want to join us at any of the destination rendezvous points, we're happy to have you, so that's it.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, or? All right, Sue, it looks like we're going to move on to you.
Yeah.
No, is that right? Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, it is.
It is.
I was pretty sure it was.
I think, you, you have the update in the packet, so I won't go through it a little bit, but just to remind you all that we continue working all through the summer, we have an amazing summer program for our students. It's a time that we can really hone in on students' social emotional skills and let them practice those kinds of things in a setting that's not academically charged. We have a summer camp, and we combine it with Greenwood Camp over there, we have lots of great peer models, and you'll see a picture of that little guy with his backpack bigger than him headed off to some summer programming. First day, we were all out and about at different buildings, but it seemed a little chaotic to me, but it seems like everybody got there, they got to their homerooms, they were in seats, and this is the big men on campus at Center School. I think the one with the pink squid hat might be a Hutton, I'm not sure. Grandchild. Let's see, over the summer, well, you bought it and they came, so you guys purchased tons of curriculum for our folks here, and they spent a lot of the summertime digging into those textbooks and designing new lessons, and so lots and lots of that work went on all through the grade levels. You can read that to, to see exactly what, this is just kind of a sampling. And then our first two days of school are always a huge one for us, just kind of making sure we plan PD for a gazillion different people, is it what it seems like, who are interested in, you know, different things and do different jobs, and they're trying to reach everybody with meaningful things is really something that we strive for. So I have a list here of some of the things that we did within the first couple of days of school, some of the trainings that we offered, and in grant news, exciting grant news, project here is a small grant, just about $10,000 that we used to buy life skills curriculum for the middle schools, that allows us then to have fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth getting the life skills curriculum, which is just like so far from where we were a couple of years ago, so I'm really happy with that. And Paul's grant kicked in a little bit to have the middle school wellness teachers trained in life skills, and they're on board and looking forward to that. We got a little bit more money for our MECO grant, which is a rarity, but we clamored a bit about the transportation costs and the way they funded those, so they funded every district a little bit more based on a formula that they had, so we got about $12,000, just under for that, that we are going to pump into family engagement events and some professional development on culturally responsive training, so.
Anyone have any questions for Sue? I have one quick one. Just on the, the additional grant money from MECO, was that something that we talked about maybe in finance sub? Or was, I, I thought at one point we talked about maybe $11,000, and we were kicking around whether it was going to be used for technology, is that the same money that I'm thinking about? Or, and if it's not, that's-
No.
You know, the, the family engagement, fine, but is the culture, is the culturally responsive practices, is that the same PD that was offered the first day of school, or is this additional?
So I think that professional development provider got sick, I think I told you that a couple minutes ago.
Oh, right, right.
So she didn't come, so no, we had already had that budget, but I think we're looking to do a little more kind of maybe coaching in classes and things like that, so.
Okay.
Marginalized student training, kind of looking at that in a broader sense, so.
Okay, perfect. I was just curious what that would look like in terms of like, that, that grant money. Thank you. Does anyone have any other follow-up or questions? Stephanie?
Is that something we would discuss in finance sub a little bit, about the, the use of those funds? Because we had talked a little bit about the techno, access to technology for those MECO students.
I mean, could we eventually, we'll have to bring a budget amendment to finance sub to review before we come here, so I don't think we've done anything with the money yet.
We haven't, but we have, we have purchased a lot of technology with MECO grant focused towards-
In the last few years.
Yeah, in the last few years, focused towards MECO students.
But in the classroom, we were asking if those students had the access at home. I don't know if we got that, if that's what we were kind of wondering about, if they have what the access is like. So we buy technology with the MECO money, but we use it in the classroom for all the students, so the question was, do those kids have access at home? So I don't know if that's, if we want to explore that before we fully tag that money.
Next finance sub, Tom, do we have a date on that?
We have a meeting next week.
Next week.
If, if this wasn't on the agenda, we can add it if we can.
We're pretty, we email back and forth with MECO parents a lot.
So you haven't, it hasn't come up?
It has not come up, right? The high school kids have access to Chromebooks that if they need it at home, they could, we lock.
That was, I think we were just-
I don't, yeah. Almost every family is connected technologically to me, especially with the bus stop this summer, so.
So we, I think when we talked, it was the, making sure that they had the access to the internet, and that they had, we had talked about hotspots, and that the books, but we didn't have the answers then, but if they're, they're out there and you know them, and it's not necessary, then that's, it's a non-issue.
We should have asked Sandy Longmore the other day.
But maybe we could put it on the agenda. It's probably an easy question to get the answer to, and then we could just have it on the finance agenda.
We did a survey in Springfield on internet access and hotspot, and we did it through the kids, it's something pretty simple to find out who has access and who doesn't.
Yeah.
So we could do that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think that was the main concern.
Yep.
The, the after-school hours, was their access, and I do remember us talking about that during the summer.
Yeah.
So that sounds like something we can revisit in finance sub and get the answers to that. So will, anyone else have any? Armon?
Yeah, I do know that the ISPs in Springfield offer low-income families internet at $9.95 a month, so just as a point of information for, for making the decision.
Good information. Anyone else? Okay, so we will move on to Mr. Mazza and the finance and operations report.
I'll do my best to keep it short. Transportation, bus transportation at the start of the year can always be challenging. We seem to be off to a decent start, so four of our six schools have in-town bus transportation. We run three buses at the high school, two at Glenbrook, one at Williams, and one at Wolf Swamp. The two buses at Glenbrook are at capacity, and we do currently have a waitlist of six students who we could not accommodate. It is a first-come, first-served when it comes to registering, we open it up usually in May through the end of the school year, and we try to send out notices to parents to sign up as soon as they can. So that is a bit of a concern, that we do have some students that we unfortunately couldn't accommodate at this point. And we also moved to the centralized bus stops for the MECO program, based on a lot of the discussions last year, seems to be working out well. We did make a couple adjustments, being the transition year from the previous structure, which was stops throughout most of Springfield to a more centralized location to accommodate what we felt were safety concerns for the students. So those, those changes were made right at the beginning of the school year, as they were brought to our attention. The town is in the process of closing out fiscal year 2018. Finance sub will be discussing a recommendation to the school committee to approve, turn it back, the remaining general fund, unexpendable amount of just over $26,000. Anticipate it'll be here on the school committee's next agenda. Quick update on capital projects, Wolf Swamp is scheduled to get a new boiler. Let's hope that it's done well before the winter season, so we don't experience some of the challenges we had last year. It is out to bid, bids are due this Friday. We did talk to DPW a little bit about that, to make sure we're on top of that schedule and tracking it, to make sure there are no interruptions. The fire alarm replacement at Center is still in progress, with DPW working with the designer for specifications. Anticipate that, I hope that'll be done sometime this year, but it might have to wait until the summer before it actually can be installed. And finally, there was a CPA project not initiated by the school department for playing fields at Blueberry Hill, I believe there was an allocation of $40,000 a few years back from the CPA fund to put in some soccer fields, and DPW sent it out to bid, and they received two responses, and both were well over the amount that was allocated. So right now, that project's going to have to go back to the drawing board to see if there are going to be additional funds appropriated for it, and why there was such a big disparity between what was requested and what the project costs were. And finance sub and school committee over the course of the next couple of months will be looking at FY '20 capital projects requests, we talked about it briefly in finance sub, probably on our next agenda next week for a little more in-depth discussion. And lastly, our first safety and security meeting is scheduled for September 28th, with departments, fire, police, administration, looking at issues and safety-related items. We also will be looking at a reunification plan for the schools, it's a pretty comprehensive document that the fire department drafted, so we'll be looking at that and eventually getting that out to all of the administrators to review and provide input. And that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any feedback, comments? Stephanie?
I first wanted to say that Sue and Tom did an excellent job on the MECO stops, and that was no small feat, but I met with Sue and Sandy on it, and really, you know, we had talked about this in committee, about five stops, but then a couple of the families had issues and they were accommodating, and I think it's really nice that the parents have a choice of where to bring their kids, so if they don't want the, the hours, they can go to the last stop, and, and then if someone had trouble with transporting their child to the bus stop, they made accommodations, so they did a really good job. I also, I wanted to ask a question about the fire alarm replacement at Center, is it still going off intermittently?
I've not heard of any reports so far this year.
Did they have a scheduled one recently? That was scheduled?
They probably had a fire drill in the first couple weeks of school.
How many times do we know it went off last year because of the need for replacement?
A lot.
So I would say, to hear that the DPW is going to put it off another year, I don't, I, they cannot discount the stress it takes on those kids when the fire alarm, kids are afraid to go to the bathroom, because you don't want to be caught in the bathroom when the fire alarm is going off that much in school. You have kids who are sensitive to noise, you've got kids doing lockdowns now, so we've got an alarm that's going off intermittently, and they're putting it off another year, and we've got a safety committee, but we've got a broken alarm system, so I don't know what we can do to prioritize that, but in elementary school with a broken alarm system and waiting another year and working with a vendor for something that cannot be that complicated. Maybe I'm wrong, but it, the stress that it's putting on kids cannot be, you know, discounted.
Yeah, most certainly we'll bring back that message. I don't know that'll be next summer, I just don't know with any of the breaks, if they're long enough to make the switch out of all of the components and get the new system up and running over a four or five-day period, so I don't know that for a fact. We most certainly can follow up with DPW and find out.
Was there a reason it wasn't done over the summer, that it's taking so long? I mean, this has been a topic- I mean, this has been a topic that's been ongoing and it's been years of intermittent fire alarms going off in that school.
I don't know that I have an answer for you on that one.
Okay, you can convey my questions.
Will do.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions or follow-up for Tom? Okay. That being said, I will move on to, um, Chair Report, which I really never give. But I think since we're in this kind of official September start to the school year, I did prepare some remarks and I apologize. I'm going to read, but we had a huge agenda tonight and I had about fifteen million things going on in my head. So I feel like if I don't write it down, sometimes it doesn't get conveyed properly. So I will be brief, um, but I did wanna share some thoughts. Um, so now that the school year's underway, I'd like to take the opportunity to use my Chair Report to address the community and the students in the district. At convocation two weeks ago, I was afforded the opportunity to address the teachers and staff. And I think it's equally important to address the community that we represent and the students that we serve. So now that our committee here is complete and welcome, Armand, um, I'd like to state that I am no more or no less than the other members on this committee. Um, as Chair, I simply have a few more responsibilities and I'm here to really facilitate our public meetings. However, as Chair, I do hope to be an effective and leader and facilitator. So I would really like the community and the students to know that this committee here is comprised of dedicated, intelligent, passionate individuals who are here serving the district and making it a priority to make sure our students thrive and succeed. We are here balancing families and work with our important committee work, and I could really not be more proud to be part of this dynamic group. So I believe a successful school committee is really a critical part of a high-functioning leadership team in any district. So please remember, we are not here driven by personal agendas. We're not sheep or blind followers, and I don't know, maybe the social norms campaign sheep thing got to me while I was writing this. Um, we're not that, and we're not a bunch of bored parents who need something to fill our days, because I've heard all of those. Um, we're here really to partner, collaborate, and explore ways in which we can assist with making our district an amazing place for your children to attend school. So every decision that I make here, I frame with the question, is this something that will benefit the district and how do we do it? So this work is time-consuming, yet vital, and it comes down to two very basic things for me. Are we doing the right thing and am I doing my best work? So that message can be applied to all of our stakeholders, I think. Our students, our parents, our teachers, our school committee, and our superintendent, all of us together. Are we doing the right thing and am I doing my best work? The expectations are very high, and that's okay, because I feel as a community member, that's what you should expect of your elected officials and your district leadership team. So I'd like to wish us all success for a great school year ahead. Thank you. That concludes that, and I will hand it over to Breggy for your student rep report, and glad to have you back. Hope you had a great summer.
Yep, I did. So we had a meeting Friday, just like our, like, committee, there's like ten of us now. So, uh, we had like a nice big group and we came up with like a bunch of ideas. Some are good, some are bad, some are like mediocre. So, um, we'll talk to Mr. Dunkerly about them and, um, we'll probably get back to you on that, like, when we have our meetings separately with you, like, off the camera. And, um, another thing I was talking about with, like, Mr. Fisher since, like, the summer was how LGBTQ history, like, often gets, like, overlooked in, like, some high school curricula and, like, historical figures. And, uh, we were talking about how, like, we don't, like, want to include, like, people in the curriculum just for their sexual identity. Like, more just like, um, seamlessly integrating it into the curriculum. And, um, we were talking about, like, how sometimes, like, when a teacher will, like, mention a historical figure and, um, there's a student in the classroom who might be, like, LGBTQ, and that historical fig- figure might be, like, uh, gay or some other LGBTQ, and like, the student might be, like, a little offended because you bring up this historical figure, but you don't mention something that's probably, like, pretty important to them. Like, for example, I didn't know, like, Leonardo da Vinci or Walt Whitman were, uh, both gay. But, um, so I was talking to him about that, and he told me that the new guidelines for, like, Massachusetts teachers, like, came out. And, um, it really, like, showed, like, how to, like, integrate it, like, effectively within the classroom. So I haven't read that yet, but, um, I'll get, once I get a chance to look at that, I think that should, like, quiet all of our concerns. Uh, last thing I have to say is the senior class play, it is Beauty and the Beast, and, uh, auditions are going on right now, I believe.
What are you trying out for?
Um, maybe like a tree, I don't know.
Does anyone have any questions or follow-up for Breggy? Breggy, I love that you, I love that you're at our meetings. I think you bring such value at things that we just don't know about. And I, I think Breggy sells himself short a little bit, because Breggy knocked on my door this summer campaigning for, um, politicians that are facing off in some races this November, so kudos to you. You, I, I think you bring a lot of value to our team here, and I really appreciate you talking about how to integrate that and what students are hearing and, and the new guidelines that have come out, things we may not be even aware of. Um, so good luck to all the seniors at the play, and thank you for always contributing in a very meaningful way to us.
Thank you.
We have no other reports tonight, so we can just move into our, uh, subcommittee reports, and we'll start with Finance.
I would do this report, but I was not at the last meeting, so I don't.
Would you like me to take?
Do you want Tom or Ryan to jump in?
Sure.
Okay.
Happy to jump in anytime, but you can leave.
All right. Um, so there are a couple items for consideration for, for approval by School Committee. The first is, um, a request from the middle school principals to fund some lunch monitors. So we currently have lunch monitors at our three elementary schools. We have not had lunch monitors at the middle schools. Uh, Finance Sub talked with, uh, we talked about this in late August, and there were some questions that I was not able to provide answers for. So they invited the two middle school principals, they attended our last meeting, um, and addressed the questions. And I think really what the crux of it is, is that having the monitors would really allow for, um, recess to be offered, um, every day for grade seven and eight. Currently, it's on an every-other-day, uh, basis, um, if not less frequent than that. Um, it also would provide some backup. The, currently, we would have one person, uh, at each school kind of assigned a lunch to be there. And if they were pulled away, they'd scramble to try and find another staff person to cover for them. Um, and I think one of the other, uh, major benefits is that it would hopefully give students the opportunity to go outside and have lunch. We talked about some creative ways where we could maybe ma- make some eating spaces for students to kind of go sit outside. And that way, there'd be supervision in both areas, um, during the lunch service. So what is, uh, presented tonight in your motion would be approval for, excuse me, up to two monitors, um, for up to two hours at each building. Um, if that were to happen, it would be a cost of, uh, just over fifteen thousand dollars. I shouldn't say just over, just under sixteen thousand dollars for the entire year. Being that we're already, you know, a couple of weeks into the school year, there is a, an anticipated opening posting. No action has been taken on it, but if the school committee were to approve it, it would allow us to kind of get the ball rolling and get, um, hopefully people in place. So I, I mean, I think that's kind of a highlight. Beth and Ryan, if you guys have more to add that I missed, please feel free to.
Yeah, the gist of it is just to make it a little bit easier on the staff and give the kids options. One of the things we always talk about is how to ease their anxiety, give them a stressful situation about, you're either, you can go inside or you can't go outside, you can only go where the adult is. It's gonna give us, give the kids more options and maybe make lunch a little more enjoyable.
I think you both summed it up very nicely. I just wanted to also comment that Brian, um, I always call you Brian, I don't know why I do that. Ryan brought up during the committee that, um, what those twenty-four minutes of lunch really look like for a kid and how, um, you're cramming some food and, and trying to make a decision to get outside. So I think, um, it was great that we gave the principals some direction on how to make that lunch environment, um, a little bit less stressful and a little bit more in combination with our recess philosophy. So thank you for summarizing that. Stephanie, I saw your hand.
Um, so it was, I, unfortunately, I couldn't get to this, um, meeting, so I do have a couple of questions. Um, when this was brought up, you know, in the beginning, uh, the idea was to put in place recess, much like the sixth graders. Were, um, they able to talk a little bit about, um, because this has turned into, um, recess, but really an outdoor lunch versus adding a recess? Did they talk about the difficulties with trying to add, like, a ten-minute recess in during the day? Which was, I believe, our initial conversation about adding recess versus an outdoor lunch? Did, was anything?
I don't think it was in particular to, to the ten-minute recess. It was more about what recess looks like and how hard it is to manage the recess during the lunch time, because that's the need for the actual lunch monitor, so we didn't really focus on the, the ten-minute recess.
I think this is great in moving forward, and I think in the direction, um, that we had talked about before. But, um, I believe the sixth graders have an actual recess, and we were trying to, to mock that. And maybe schedule-wise, it was really impossible. I don't know the ins and outs, and it, it might have been. But originally, we were talking about not, not just making the lunch an outdoor lunch, it was actually adding a recess. And so we wanted that day broken up, we wanted the movement, and we wanted the kids outside. It, it very well, I imagine, they tried and maybe it just didn't work. I just didn't know if you had that, um, conversation. But I think this is a great move forward, because even if they were able to do that, they would need some sort of monitor, um, anyway. But maybe it's not possible. But I was just, this is the first report I've gotten, um, back on how that recess plan has worked. We, we haven't heard anything about it, so I didn't know what happened to the actual, I, initial, I don't know if you know, Marty, of, um, recess.
I think they discovered that it was challenging without having the, the, the monitors. You know, not having, um, someone to regularly be there to supervise the kids outside. And so I think it was a, I think that what they were encouraged to hear was that the committee might be in support of some options to do some outside dining, you know, and enhance that, those physical spaces maybe at some point down the road. But, uh, it didn't, it certainly didn't, uh, play out the way they had hoped, just given the, just given the, the lack of supervision there. So I think this hopefully will, will create that opportunity to do it every day. I think in terms of having a regular, um, recess on top of that, I think if that's something that, um, the committee wants us to take a look at, it's sort of, I think anything's possible. Um, I think one of the things the middle school principals have talked about is maybe take a look at their schedules this year to see if it might be possible to reorganize. And, um, it's a matter, it's a, it's a finite block of time, so if we add the recess, what, what are we collectively willing to compromise or give up, I guess?
I think, I'm, I think I'm the only committee member who was here during this discussion, but I thought that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that was the original discussion, was adding the recess in, not just making the lunch an outdoor lunch. Although I, it's not to discount, I think this is a great move in the direction, but I just haven't heard any, um, report back about what it, what happened with the actual recess.
We didn't talk about recess, and they didn't, they didn't come to us talking about outdoor lunch. That was one of our ideas while we were talking about it.
Well, I just say.
More fresh, fresh air.
Yeah. I just called this outdoor lunch, because they didn't take, it's the same twenty-four minutes they had, they didn't add time. So the only difference is, you know, the kids have the option of going outside. Um, but I believe our original discussion was just about the recess, so I never heard, um, what happened with that? If it was just a fail schedule-wise or?
I do think that was part of it, that the schedule, either taking time away from every class and shortening the instructional time to add this ten minutes was going to be problematic, and then also coverage for that particular recess. I mean, I think they've been trying to build in movement and equipment to allow for it during the day, during the instructional time also, um, to kind of address that concern. But I think the, the limited block of time was the biggest hurdle that they experienced in trying to add time on top of the lunch period.
I think when they, when they went back after that discussion, Stephanie, I think when they went back to talk to their staff about it, what came out of it was the, how short the existing blocks are already at the middle school, and, and shaving time might have been a challenge for them. But, so that, that kind of morphed into, you know, what can we achieve, given the constraints? And it was some professional development around movement in the classroom, some of the, um, some of the movement equipment, uh, and then carving out time out of the lunch block to allow for that recess. I think they felt like that was the best they can do, given the, the time constraints that they had, the scheduling constraints.
I would agree. I would agree. I think they, they talked about shaving, you know, two or three minutes off of a forty-eight-minute block already, 'cause it's not long enough, and came up with, like, you know, not, 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 not the idea. Sixth graders don't have foreign language, so that's why they have, uh, yeah, they have a longer amount of time in the day to fit in a recess. So I think they did kind of commit to looking at their schedule holistically this year to see, you know, I, I think it would be pretty dramatic changes in order to get a chunk of time that would be.
So seventh grade used to have recess, and then it was taken away. That's why I didn't know how, how it fit in. But with that said, I, I, we can have that discussion another time. I think this is a great move in the direction. I was just looking for some feedback, because I never heard, um, yeah, how that, how that played out. Um, it's been, it's been a while.
And Karen, did you have a question?
I was, I was gonna ask, how are we, how are we, how are we doing it for the sixth grade? But basically, you answered that question, so, um, they only get, though, right, sixth grade only gets, like, eleven minutes or, like, nine minutes.
Yeah, it's not a ton of time.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's in addition to the twenty-four minutes?
Their lunch.
Of lunch?
In addition to their lunch. And I think it's attached to their lunch, at least at Glenbrook, so that they can have that longer block of time. So finish their lunch, and then you have monitors, they'll maybe even have a little more time.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is, I think, I was not on the committee either when the initial recess, Stephanie would be the, the one standing member. Um, when we had, they had those initial, so, initial recess conversations. So what I'm hearing is maybe that was something that was desired, and, um, for whatever reason, teachers and staff struggled with how to implement it. But maybe we didn't get that feedback, or we didn't hear, um, how that was working out. So I think, um, moving forward, I will say I found Nicole and Neil very helpful. Um, it was great to have them come to Finance Sub and be able to let us know. And I told them, it, it's oftentimes that as a committee, we will make a policy or come up with something that is great on paper, but boots on the ground, how are they doing it in the school building? And, and we need to do a better job, I think, of following through with that, so that we understand this is kind of what we were asking for, and then how does it actually get implemented? Um, so I, I think Neil and Nicole would be totally open to any follow-up questions, and, and Marty as well. Anything else on the lunch, Armand?
Hey, Tom, the only question I have for you is Massachusetts labor law, isn't a minimum of three hours a workday?
I don't know, we haven't run into that issue.
Okay.
So we have them at the elementary school, so I'll have to look into that.
Okay. I just thought you had to pay people a minimum of three hours of, of a day.
Yeah, we haven't run into that issue.
Okay.
Melanie?
Voluntary monitors left, I mean, we go really far back, like, it used to be parents' chairs on the playground.
I do think elementary might have some, but even those are.
We just got a notice the other day asking.
Yeah.
Some voluntary.
Yeah.
Like, so supplemental, the volunteers.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Stephanie, you wanna follow up?
Thank, I, I, unfortunately, it couldn't be at that meeting, but I do wanna thank Nicole and, and Neil, and apologize for having to ask these questions here versus Finance Sub. But, um, but I am really, I think this is going in a great direction, getting the kids outside. And, um, I'm glad, um, they were able to come and, and talk more about it. I just hadn't gotten that feedback from, about what happened with the recess, so.
Fair enough. Um, I have a recommended motion if anyone would like to move along with that. Ryan, you wanna?
Go ahead.
I move on the recommended, on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the addition of up to two lunch monitors at each middle school, working up to two hours per day.
Anyone have any further questions or follow-up on that? If not, we can call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So the motion passes. Um, and then Tom, if you'd like to move on with the building use request?
So in your packet, there is a building use request for, um, submitted by the Hamden County Beekeepers Association. Um, they, this would be their first time renting the auditorium and cafeteria. Um, they have not held their meetings here in the past. Uh, they requested, um, a date, a Saturday, in January, February, and March, I think, when Finance Sub, I didn't have the specific dates. when Finance Sub, I didn't have the specific dates, they were flexible. Um, we do have those dates now. It would be January 12th, February 16th, and March 16th. They're Saturdays. They would be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, majority of their time would be in the auditorium, um, with the cafeteria for when they break out for lunch. So, because they have an anticipated attendance or participants of 150 people, it requires School Committee approval.
And I think the only thing I would add that we talked about in Finance Sub is there will be no bees present-
Correct.
-during the meeting. Any other questions or follow-up for that? If not, we have the, uh, recommended motion, if anyone cares to read it.
Oh, sure. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approve the building use request from the Hampden County Beekeepers Association dated July 26, 2018.
Second. No further discussion? So, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes, thank you. Um, and then finally, Tom, the FY19 grant awards.
So, in your packet is a memo, um, from me to Finance Sub dated August 27th, kind of listing the FY19, uh, various grants and the amount that we've been awarded initially. I don't believe this entails the Medco $11,000. I don't think we knew that at the time we were talking about, um, this at our last Finance Sub. So, that we would, um, we would include that when we, uh, amend the budget, the line item budget. So, every year, we submit this and seek the School Committee's, um, approval and acceptance of the grant award amounts. I also included a financial document giving you the, um, initial line item appropriation for each of the grants. Again, this will have to be amended based on the awards, which we'll do sometime this fall.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or follow-up for Tom on the grant? Okay. We also have another recommended motion on the table. Guys are so eager to jump up and read the motions tonight, I just can't.
I'll, I'll do it again. Flying now. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approve the FY19 grant awards, as indicated in Mr. Maz's memo dated August 27, 2018.
Second. Any further discussion? So, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed or abstaining? So, the motion passes, and that finishes our Finance Subcommittee business, and we can move on to policy. And they just met, um, they met last month on August 14th.
Yeah, so we've, we've not met since, but we do have a couple of, uh, policies that are outstanding. Uh, I think presenting today for second reading, we have JLCD, which is Administration of Medications. There are four other policies that, um, actually are on day 29, and not day 30, without any comment. So, um, you know, my-
So, just to jump, so your policy requires a 30-day review period, so Melanie noticed that only 29 days have passed. So, if you were to approve the policies, I suppose it would be by making an, an exception to your policy BGB, uh, which requires the 30-day waiting period. So, that, that's up to the committee. Uh, we could bring it back-
And keep in mind, it's only four hours from now.
If you stay long enough. And we could wait, and get to 12:01, uh, and get to the 30th day.
I am not motivated to stay until midnight to vote on a policy. I think that we can just hold off on those, so that we're within the-
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So, then, the only policy that would be approved today is JLCD, Administration of Medication. So, I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that the School Committee approve the amended policy, as presented, policy JLCD, administering medicine to students.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So, the motion passes, and thank you, Melanie, for the update on policy. Um, and then we will move into, um, our Evaluation Subcommittee, which met on September 4th.
Great. So, in the Evaluation Subcommittee, we, the main thing, I'll, I'll talk about last, but we, Marty presented a few documents to us. One is a two-way communication engagement monitoring and feedback form, which is something we spoke to him about when he goes to these meetings and various events, how is he capturing the information that he gets, and, uh, what is he gonna do with it afterwards? So, it's a form for him to use and, and collect information. He, again, went over the Evaluation Subcommittee Progress Monitoring Form. It's something that we use in the Subcommittee itself. Whenever he receives feedback from us, he tracks it, and then, uh, we review it in the next meeting. And lastly, you see in your packet, the Community Conversation Series. We talked about this, which is sort of like the Coffee House. It's in your packet. And it's, it's, again, it's gonna be a list of the events, and where he's gonna go, and what they're gonna talk about. And we discussed how maybe we would repeat them once the popularity and the enjoyment of these meetings gets out into the public. Maybe the first one isn't so filled to capacity, but later on, it would be. So, we may recycle some topics, depending on how that's going. We did discuss some curriculum alignment stuff, but, um, I don't think it's anything to bring up right now, but it's something that'll be ongoing. And lastly, it was, um, as Beth mentioned, on our last School Committee meeting, everybody had the opportunity to, over, to look over Marty's improvement plan, and give some feedback. Um, we discussed that nobody gave us any feedback, nobody contacted me, Beth, Karen, or Marty. So, I think it was last meeting, we said that we appreciated, um, the way Marty took our feedback in the committee, took it very seriously, and put it into his plan, and that we were hoping to go forward with that plan, which is gonna be presented to you shortly.
Do you have anything you'd like to-
No, I, I, I'll, I'll say, I will say that I appreciated the, um, feedback from the Evaluation Subcommittee, the opportunity to, um, refine and revise the plan over the course of a couple of meetings, based on their feedback, and, and based on, um, the feedback, you know, going back to the end of last year. So, I hope what you hear later is sort of reflective of the interests of the, and direction of the Evaluation Subcommittee, but also reflective of the, uh, summative evaluation from May of 2018. So, we'll get into it a little bit more later.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Stephanie?
Ryan, did you say that you solicited feedback on that from people? What was that?
Well, Beth said that, that our last School Committee meeting, with the, the form was submitted for a reading, and people could review.
On the September 4th?
Our last full Subcommittee meeting.
Oh, Subcommittee.
I'm sorry, no, no, the first, the last School Committee meeting, it was brought up.
Were we, did we see?
We did not see-
Right, I think this was the first time I've seen it.
It was in the packet for the last School Committee meeting, and Beth said if anybody would like to read it, and give some feedback to herself or Marty, to, please feel free to do that.
Which meeting was that?
Last School Committee.
Um, Sep-, August 14th.
Okay, so over the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or feedback? Okay. So, Ryan, thank you for the, um, the Eval Subcommittee report. And, um, at that point, we'll move on to our ongoing business, which, up first, we have School Committee goals. So, um, you'll notice that the School Committee goals, which we did establish at our last meeting, are in your packet with, um, the objectives. So, Karen and I met with Sue last week, and Marty was able to pop into that meeting for a little bit. Um, and we sat down and pulled up all the goals, of which we have four. Um, and we decided to start plugging in some of the objectives. Um, some we didn't have yet from everybody, some came in later that day. But I think the general consensus was, once we started talking about it, that I really feel like our School Committee goals are really important, and in order to, um, give them the time and attention that I think they deserve, we had suggested moving the goals topic, um, out of our regularly scheduled meeting tonight, um, and into like more of a workshop format, where we would post the meeting. But it would be off-camera, and we would all meet, um, and kind of get together and come together and look at our mission, and is that, you know, driving our goals? And then, what do our objectives really become? Because sometimes I think it's a little bit more painstaking, I guess I would say, when it's done here, and, uh, you know, maybe some, I want people to be able to be comfortable offering, um, what they think is, is a good objective. I think the goals, um, goal-setting is hard, and that's why I think MASC does, um, breakout and workshop sessions at the conference, because it, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But I think the goals are very important, the goals, um, should be rigid, but the objectives and how we get to those goals should be something that, you know, we have some, um, fluidity with, is, is my opinion. So, instead of diving into the document and going through the objectives and voting on all of that tonight, I wanted to open it up to the rest of the committee and see what the feedback was in terms of doing that type of workshop format, and just concentrating on the goals and objectives.
I think that's a great idea. It would give us, I think, more time. There's a lot of things on the agenda tonight. I wouldn't want people to feel rushed, and, um, it looks like there's a lot of good feedback that people sent in, and, um, I just think that would, I think that's a great idea. I support it fully.
Thank you. Thanks, Bronwyn. Um, anyone else have any feedback on, on that?
I agree, I like the idea.
Okay. So, um, Diane, I think that we would probably send out another-
Doodle poll?
-doodle poll. And, um, you know, I, I hate to have people have to come to additional evening meetings, but this is important, and I think, since you guys agree, that's the best way to, to do it. So, look for that email from Diane, and I do appreciate the time that Sue took in, in assisting us with the objectives, and for everybody who submitted their objectives, they were phenomenal. I'm, I'm really impressed with, you know, what we're gonna be able to pull together. Um, so, please respond to Diane, and, and let her know that we can hopefully get that set up in the next couple of weeks to get those, those finalized. So-
Do we have any, any sense of, um, the timing of the meeting? We looking for a late afternoon, it's early evening? Is there-
I think Diane's pretty good about giving us a couple of different blocks to pick from.
I think we talked about pizza being in there. Within the next, like, how quick? Two weeks?
I think by October-
By October.
Yeah, first, we should have it on the calendar, or attempt to. Food would be important. I think that's always, um, good. So, uh, after 4:30? After 5? I know the, we'll give a couple of options on the poll, and I know that hours for families between 5 and 8 are so hectic, but, and also, um, you know, keeping the extended day for the administrators. So, we will send out the poll and see what we, what we get and what the consensus is. But I appreciate, um, your willingness to work at that in that type of format. Melanie?
Yeah, just to point out that last week of September, we have a, we have something scheduled for the 24th.
Yes, on Monday evening.
And then, we have the Tuesday, um, night of Subcommittee meeting as well.
Okay.
And I will be here the rest of the week, but, that, you know, we will, October 1st is that next Monday. So, just to keep in mind that.
So, Diane, maybe I'll send some dates to you, so that we don't-
So, that'll be next week.
Yeah, load up that week. Okay, so we will, we'll see what we can capture.
I'll see what we can do.
Yeah, we can, I mean, it's not, we don't have to be rigid with, we can be flexible. The important part is to get everybody together, so as long as that happens. You know, and I just, I just don't wanna prolong the goals until like November, December, but I think we're, I think we're in good shape. Um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll look at a couple of dates and see what is available for the, the majority. Um, so, no motion on that, and then we can just, if there's no other questions on that, we can move into Marty's annual plan presentation?
So, we're gonna use the projector again. All right. So, pleased to, um, have an opportunity to present to you, um, in sort of summary format via this PowerPoint, uh, my annual growth and improvement plan, and the, um, the, the plan as it is in your packet, um, is reflective of, of the slides here, and it goes into greater detail, and this is meant to highlight some of the key actions and give you an understanding of the, the structure and layout of the plan. So, uh, you're familiar with, uh, the evaluation cycle that all educators in Massachusetts experience? And so, what, um, what I have engaged in as superintendent is a process that is familiar to the teachers and the administrators, uh, that it's a cyclical process that, um, where one engages in self-assessment and goal-setting, uh, considerable time implementing the plan, mid-cycle goals reviews, followed by a summative evaluation. So, to put some sort of dates on the, the plan, uh, that, you know, where we are in this cycle, uh, you're familiar, you know that in May of 2018, the School Committee conducted a summative evaluation. And again, I hope that the plan that, that you see in your packets, and that I'll talk to you about now, is, is reflective of that summative evaluation, and, you know, genuinely made an effort to, uh, create a, a growth and improvement plan that's reflective of the feedback that I received, uh, throughout. So, the, the self-assessment process, you know, was initiated following that summative evaluation. It continued on through the summer. I always say the summer is sort of good noodle time, it's a good time to, um, sit back and reflect on the big picture, my own personal and professional goals, the goals of the district, et cetera, et cetera. And then, the, um, Evaluation Subcommittee was great about staying engaged throughout the summer, which I appreciated. It kind of will help me hit the ground running with this plan. Uh, so, through July and August, I worked with the Evaluation Subcommittee, uh, establishing the plan, developing it, revising it based on, uh, their feedback. And it was in the early part of August that we settled on the plan as it is in your packet. And then, it would be, the committee has, is, uh, the Evaluation Subcommittee, that is, has talked about conducting the mid-cycle, uh, evaluation, the mid-cycle review in January of 19, to set us up for a, a final summative evaluation in the spring of 2019. So, um, I think the, everyone's hope is that we stay, uh, true to the cycle, uh, and hit the milestones that, that we've agreed to. Um, so, there are three components of this plan. Uh, there's a, and this is by sort of DESI regulation, um, and this would be, you know, the common features of all superintendents', um, uh, annual plans, a professional practice goal, student learning goal, and the district improvement plan should be a, uh, component as well. So, just to talk to you a little bit about the, the structure, I'll, I'll sort of spare you some of the, the verbiage for now. The, uh, the professional practice goal has a, a school governance focus and a stakeholder engagement focus. So, there are two focal areas within the goal, uh, and within each focal area, there's a series of action steps and an explicit, um, description of the intended outcome or outcomes. One of the ways that educators in Massachusetts engage in that self-assessment is to judge their goals against the DESI rubrics. So, again, that's something that we ask all educators in the district to do, uh, and that's something that, uh, I've attempted to show in the annual plan, is how the, how the goals are correlated to that DESI superintendent evaluation rubric. The second component is, as I mentioned, a student learning goal, and within this goal, there's two focal areas, an SEL focus and a school safety focus, same thing here. So, here's a series of action steps and a description of the intended outcome. So, component one, uh, the professional practice goal is to further develop and improve my leadership skills in order to strengthen community relations, improve district governance, and enhance the engagement of all stakeholders. Uh, it's something that I think we've, we've talked about as, as a team here, is, is, um, how can we work effectively as a governance- can we work effectively as a governance team to reach the goals that we're all generally in agreement on, I think. And so to articulate the focus, the focal areas within that goal, you'll see the school governance focus focuses on my work with the school committee and that attempt to build relational, relational trust, teamwork, and the partnership that I know will ultimately benefit the students and staff of this district. The stakeholder and engagement and community relations focus, sustaining and expanding on existing information dissemination practices while establishing, and I emphasize, new opportunities for all stakeholders to engage in, the phrase we've been using a lot with the evaluation subcommittee is two-way conversation. So I think that, I'm proud of the, the work that we've done in terms of getting information out to parents and now, you know, taking it to the next level, making sure there are venues, opportunities where parents provide me and all administrators really with feedback on a regular sustained basis. So the, as I said, the plan is more dense than, than I'm showing you here, but that school governance focus, that some of the selected actions to facilitate the development of the team building retreat, and so that's underway. Beth and I have been chatting about that, and we have tentatively set aside September 24th to bring the school committee together with the administrative team. That's a Monday evening, I believe. And I think finding those opportunities for the administrative team to talk to and really often sort of, I think we found that informal opportunities create the best opportunities for conversation. So what can we do, what can I do to create those opportunities for the school committee to be engaged with the administrative team on our progress in implementing the district improvement plan and obviously many other areas? We had our first opportunity back at the end of the summer. Stephanie, Melanie, and Bronwyn were able to attend a, the tail end of our administrative retreat. And I thought we had a really healthy discussion on the district improvement plan and some of the key actions that we want to take this year, but also talk kind of openly about some of the areas where maybe we're not seeing the traction that, that we want to see. So I thought that was a really helpful conversation. And then one of the things the evaluation subcommittee had talked to me about is just making sure, you know, finding opportunities to, for my own PD, pardon the acronym there, my own professional development associated with the goals of this plan just today. As a matter of fact, Diane was, we were talking about registering me for a, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges has a nice showcase event in October highlighting best practices at the high school level. And so I'm looking forward to attending that. I think it's mid-October sometime, so. So again, more to it, but that's some select actions. Stakeholder engagement and community relations. We have bookmarked October 2nd as a date for a school safety forum. And I think in the, in sort of post Parkland, there was, you know, received a lot of questions, concerns from parents about, you know, what are you doing, you know, around school safety? And I'm hoping that that forum would give us an opportunity to, my computer's dying here, give us an opportunity to engage the community in some of the work that is happening on our, I'll try it this way. Let's see. Doesn't want us, let's see. All right. Doesn't want to stay in the full screen mode for some reason. So that school safety forum, October 2nd. I had talked to Beth about perhaps having a member of the school committee participate in that forum. We're imagining sort of a panel presentation, brief description of some of the work that's happening in the PD, here in the schools, with the school committee, and then maybe engaging parents in a question and answer session. One of the things that I've been interested in since I came to the district is establishing a district parent curriculum advisory council. And again, it's just trying to find those opportunities for parents to, you know, know that they have a venue, a place that they can go to provide us with feedback. And in this case, it relates to curriculum. So Sue thankfully is kind of investigating some models for us. It's something that we haven't had in place before, but I'm eager to get it up and running. Still have to work out sort of the responsibilities and the makeup and the membership of that group, but I'm excited about it. This community conversation series, this is the flyer, this is sort of in draft form. Diane, thank you for putting that together. This is a flyer that I'm hoping to get, get on every kitchen table in the district. And it's a few opportunities for parents to talk to me informally and in some cases with the school committee about some of the issues that I think keep crossing all of our desks. The first one is I'm hoping to get off to the senior center. And we've already set a date with Jim Layden over at the senior center, October 17th, to sit down with some of the seniors and just say, you know, what's the state of the union address sort of to the seniors and give them an opportunity to provide us some feedback as well. And then three other opportunities, the topics include addressing childhood stress and anxiety, career readiness, which is something that I'm personally interested in, and then citizenship, which I think is coming up more and more, and particularly in light of the new social studies frameworks, you know, how can, what can we do as a community, as a district to provide opportunities for students to be engaged civically and to, and sharpen their, sort of their civic awareness and practices? So I'm interested in seeing how that could, you know, the feedback from the community. There's a screenshot of the flyer that you have at your desk. If you have any questions or feedback on that, I'm interested. So the next two slides here, Ryan referenced this. This is a, a two-way community engagement and monitoring feedback form. So this is kind of a running record of some of the, some of the opportunities that I've had to kind of enlist feedback from the community. And so my intention is to, to turn that back to the committee so that the committee is hearing the same thing I'm hearing. You know, so if I'm, if I'm hearing, you know, for example, questions that came out on Long Mid-Ohio Sports Night, for example, that this would be an opportunity to feed that back to the committee. It's also sort of a running record of some of the activities that I've been involved with. And then similarly, this is a tool just for my own purposes to track the commendations and the recommendations of the evaluation subcommittee. So those are just some sort of documents that I think that will help us all keep our eyes on the ball. The second component relates to further developing school learning environments that are inclusive and safe. And so what does that look like and what is my role? Couple of thoughts, the SEL focus, kind of highlighting my interest in leading the district and further developing the district in a way that's inclusive of all learners and supportive of the wide range of student needs. And then the school safety focus, lead the district in further developing safe, supportive, and secure learning environments. So the plan that is before you is meant to capture sort of some of the, the new initiatives, the new directions that we're headed in. It's not meant to be a compilation of things that are already in place. So in terms of SEL, some of the selected actions, we talked earlier in the meeting about the culturally responsive practice. And we want to make sure that all educators understand their role in supporting marginalized students and creating inclusive, safe learning environments for all students. Sexual abuse awareness training, we, we started this in small measure last year, but we have a speaker coming in in January, February is it? January to address all staff on sexual abuse awareness. And it's something that we, we want to do our part to raise the awareness of, of staff in this district, in this area. And then rolling out ESPT, and this is that verbal screening practice that our nurses would be involved with. Paul McNeil mentioned it earlier. We want to make sure that the staff understands how to do it. We want to make sure that the parents understand why we're doing it and also make sure the parents understand that there's an option to opt out if they, if they so choose. That's at 7th and 9th grade. And then the school safety focus, we'll talk, I guess, at the tail end of the meeting about the see something, say something initiative. And so one of my takeaways from last year was this idea that it's important to provide parents with, and students and staff even, with an opportunity to share information on an anonymous basis if it relates to, you know, an urgent student safety situation. Obviously, we prefer feedback that, you know, where parents give it to us directly with their, with their names attached. And we're always, that way we can engage in two-way correspondence. But we see that see something, say something tool is potentially a powerful way to help us make sure that we're keeping our eyes on urgent safety matters. My leadership of Long Mid-Ohio Athletics and making sure that we are implementing some of the changes that we talked about last year. And then finally, strengthening that partnership with town safety officials, the police department, the fire department, the board of health. We have a number of balls in the air in this area, camera surveillance, we beefing up the network, the servers to allow for the placement of additional cameras. Talked about the safety forum. And then the safety drills, one of which Tom mentioned earlier, you know, we want to make sure that we are in a position to activate reunification drills. And I want to thank Chair, Chief Dearborn from the fire department for helping us with that. And we'll be talking to him in the weeks ahead about what that looks like in our schools. So how do we, how do we know that these things are happening? Particularly, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to measure student achievement, but when you're talking about measuring engagement and safety and whether kids feel connected, we've got a few tools that are available to us. The YRBS survey tool, which frankly, what Shelley and Paul talked about today is really probably just a small percentage of the data that's available to us through the student surveys that we do with, in our wellness classes. So that's, there's some really, really rich information that we can tap into. One of the things we talked about with the evaluation subcommittee was that Long Mid, the, the staff and community survey tool. So you remember, we administered this back in the fall of 16. And so the hope is that in January of 19, we reissue that survey or a version of that survey to kind of, as another check-in. It's a, it's a survey, as you recall, it's based on the work of panorama education and it's based on the standards for district effectiveness for the Department of Education. So I'm anxious to put that survey out. And then finally, you'll see the, the mass DESI logo on one of the surveys that are screenshotted there. I'm looking forward to making greater use of the data that we get from those student questionnaires that are issued at the end of MCAS exams. And I'm really pleased that, that the state is going in this direction because I think it creates those norm-based questions where we can compare our progress in key areas to, you know, the progress that other districts are making. So, so there's a number of ways that we can measure and gauge our success. Last component, we're almost there. Thanks for your patience. The district improvement plan, what I've done in these final slides is to highlight some of the, the key action steps that we're anticipating in the 18, 19 school year. Special programs committee sharing, information sharing. I mean, I think it's just like being oriented as a district, being oriented to sharing information out to the community and then also receiving information from the community, particularly as it relates to student wellness and students' social and emotional well-being. We had a really good discussion with the school committee members that attended our administrative retreat around the CASL competencies. And these are the, the competencies that can frame and provide some alignment across all of our schools in terms of social, emotional learning. So if you want to learn more about that, I'm happy to chat. Culturally responsive educational practice, the training we talked about, start time task force. The folks that were on that committee can expect to hear from me very soon. Middle school botfin life skills. And then the other goals of the district improvement plan, differentiation, taking a deeper dive into that. We got a lot of staff that are excited to bring in Rick Womelley. And Rick Womelley will talk to staff about best practice in teaching and learning, but specifically around differentiation and as appropriate standards-based assessment. So we're hoping that Rick will push our thinking in that area. Expanding opportunities for co-teaching. School committee was, was, was great in recognizing that we could make an investment in special education staff to allow for, to create the environment, the conditions to expand co-teaching in the district. And so we've identified a trainer, Lisa Decker, is a kind of an expert in the area. And Jean Fontaine and I have been chatting about how we can get some staff out to some trainings that she offers. Enhance fidelity to readers and writers workshop in the math workshop model. We feel like we really need to be firm in our commitment to those models as a way to promote differentiation and a way to promote alignment across our elementary classrooms. And then admin PD on project-based learning. I think it's something that we need to investigate more purposefully as an administrative team. And then lastly, I think that's it. Curriculum alignment, final slide, thanks for your patience. Curriculum leadership council. We activated this last year, but where we want to get to this year is the creation of a, a document that you would have that would assist you in your planning around curriculum investments so that we all have a clear idea of what the curriculum review cycle looks like in, in various disciplines. So we're, we have a draft version of that, and I think when we get that team together, we can refine that document further. The parent curriculum advisory council I mentioned, implementation of standards-based report card. One of the great things about that, so there's, there's a couple of byproducts of that standards-based report card work. One obviously is good information for parents around what proficiency looks like at each grade level. But I think one of the, one of the better byproducts too is that it's, it's increasing the alignment that we're seeing across our elementary classrooms across the district. So a lot of rich, rich conversations on what proficiency looks like and how to properly assess at those grade levels. Middle school ELA. This is an area frankly that I think we just, you know, we want to tighten up on. There's some, there's some agreement across the district that we want to be more purposeful in bringing ELA teachers together to make, to define the scope and sequence and define our expectations. And so I think you'll hear more about that work in the, in the year ahead. And then the history and social science framework has been revised and there's a very specific emphasis on civics. And so we need to start to think about what the scope and sequence will look like. It will require potentially some revisions. So we'll have to be, we'll have to do, roll up our sleeves and do some honest, good curriculum work in that area. And, and also think about how we can introduce more project-based learning in ways that promote civic engagement in children. So those are some key action steps that we're anticipating in relation to that district improvement plan. So there it is. That presentation meant to be a reflection of the document they have, and I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you for presenting. I think we should open it up to any questions or feedback. I think we should open it up to any questions or feedback. Stephanie, you want to go ahead?
I just want to start off. So this is the first time it's being presented. I know in August 14, the Evaluation Subcommittee, it was in the summer, I was not at that meeting, but it said there would be no expectation to discuss or approve the annual plan at this meeting. I know it was included in the packet, but it wasn't discussed by a committee, so at that point, it wouldn't really be something that the committee would give input to a Subcommittee on without it being discussed in the larger committee. So I know that Ryan had said that he didn't get any feedback, but at that point, it had not been presented to the committee. So I just preface my comments with that, because I don't want it to appear that I had an opportunity that would have been appropriate to give feedback before it was presented to the larger committee. So I don't need to go first, I can go first, but I just wanted to preface it with that. You want me to go first?
If you, you have the floor, so if you want to continue, that's fine unless anyone feels an urgent need to.
I just, I have some questions. So on the School Governance Focus, when it talks about the intended outcomes, one of the outcomes on there is the pre- and post-survey data and adherence to norms. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that. What does that survey look like? What are the norms that is referred to here? What measures are going to be taken to measure increased trust?
So I think it's, what I appreciate about the role of the Evaluation Subcommittee is that it would be sort of a standing Subcommittee that will provide regular feedback based on the plan. And so, I think the discussions there have been very open and frank and honest, and it's been an opportunity for me to hear some direct feedback on what can be done differently or better, and then also an opportunity to hear some feedback on things that I should continue to do and should be reinforced. The pre- and post-survey data, I think it's a reference to the, sort of, the feedback from the committee. I think we haven't fleshed out what that survey tool would look like, but one of the things that I'm interested in is the idea of like a, kind of, you know, an upward survey, so surveying the committee and getting some feedback on what that relationship looks like and how it could be improved in the future. So that might be an area that we can take back to the Evaluation Subcommittee and talk a little bit more about that.
So the pre-part of that survey, when would that be done?
Yeah, I think that's something that, I think we've got to flesh that out with the Evaluation Subcommittee.
Okay. So there's another survey under Stakeholder Engagement that would go out to Staff and Community Survey. Is there a plan for the committee to see that survey before it goes out?
Yeah, so you have seen that, that's, I'll go back to that screenshot. That is, so that LPS Staff and Community Survey, that's the survey that went out in the fall of 16. And so, it exists, it's an extensive survey.
So it's already gone out before we're using the same?
Right, but we talked about if there's things that we, I'm always open to adding elements or questions to it.
So that was my other comment, is that some of these things have already been done. So when I think about an annual improvement plan for the year, I want to see new things. You know, I would assume that would be done again, but it's not a new survey. So that's already been done. Number four with the Special Programs Committee, and the discussion at the end has already been done. There's a lot in the end that's already been done. So I don't know if I go through each one. Some of the things on here are actually responsibilities of, so we have the ESPT on here, so ensure that parents are educated on the district's use of the new verbal screening tool. Those are, I don't know that that falls under, so we've got the ESPT on there. Our Substance Abuse Counselor would be doing that, as well as ensuring that the screening is administered responsibly and with sensitivity. I see that as her role, maybe not a goal for you over the year. You know, safety drills, working with public safety officials, we're already doing that. Community-wide dissemination of data gathered by LPS through school climate surveys, we're already doing that. Working with town officials and public safety officers for camera surveillance. Now, I know that that's come to finance, so we need money for that, so that's sort of already been done. So some of these things, I'm looking, when I talk about, you know, an annual plan, I'm looking for something new over the year. And when it's an improvement plan, I also wanted to ask, there are things on, oh, sure.
Just a while before we stack up too many concerns, so I'll try to hit on some of the things, Stephanie. So ESPT, I think it's, given that it's our first year, I think I would want to provide some direct leadership on that. It may, we may get to a point where it settles in and it becomes sort of like scoliosis screening or, you know, but given that we are in our initial year, I think it's, you know, my leadership in communicating that to the parents, and my leadership in gathering the nurses to talk about how and when and what we're going to administer, I think it will be critical. The safety drill part, I think there's a lot of growth areas for us there. I think the reunification drills is an area that we're interested in doing some, heading off in some new directions on. The, you know, additionally, as it relates to drills, I think getting into training staff on that flexible response to intruders is really critical. The data sharing part, I think we're at the beginning stages of that in terms of sharing data out. We heard tonight that the close community data, which goes back to the YRBS survey, we really haven't shared that out widely in the community. In fact, Shelley was telling me a story tonight about the, or the other day, about the Board of Health has, in the past, has been interested in getting that data, but previous administrations had kind of held on to it, not wanting to issue that data, and it's sometimes hamstrung their ability to get some grants, so.
Did you send that data out last year to the district?
Not the, we sent it out to the high school PAC, but I think getting that data, pushing that feedback out to the whole community, I think it's going to be, and that close community flyer, that has not gone out before. Shelley and I talked at the end of last year, said like, I'm interested, we called it the two-pager, the two-pager is going to be, I'm a four-pager, but kind of getting that flyer out into the parents' hands so that they're seeing what we're seeing. And then that social norms campaign, I think is another reflection of that. You know, we're just at the very, very beginning stages of that. So I think there's, you're always building on previous work, you're always scaffolding and building on existing foundations, but I think there's a lot of new directions that we're hoping to go off in with this plan.
I believe that information, and we've talked about that information being disseminated to the district, and it was something that you were proud of, giving it in the past, it hadn't been, but it had, you had done it, and we were all really happy about it. I believe Tom Landers had spoken about it. So I believe that did go out to the district. So I just believe that there are definite points on here that I feel have already been achieved. But I also had another question. So when you correlate to the Mass, to DESI's rubric, and you talk about instructional leadership, specifically data-informed decision-making using multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning, can you talk to me about, under Component 1, where you make that correlation with School Governance Focus and Stakeholder Engagement, can you talk to me about where you see instructional leadership? I think it's very strong on community engagement, and last year, on your evaluation, that was a strength of yours. But I'm wondering where the instructional leadership part of this plan, you see it in there?
I think I may need you to repeat that. Stephanie, are you asking how the?
So you correlated it to Standard 1, Instructional Leadership. So your professional practice goal is correlated to the Standard 1. Oh, so 3 is where you list out the DESI rubric. So when we evaluate at the end, we look at the DESI rubric, and you want to make the correlation on your annual plan to DESI. So I'm just wondering where in your professional practice goal, the instructional leadership part, particularly the data-informed decision-making related to student learning, is in there?
So there is, so that Component 1 is correlated to three standards, Standard 1, the one you referenced, but also Standard 3 and Standard 4. So Standard 1, you're asking about how that's reflected in the plan?
Yes.
Multiple data sources?
Specific to really, yes, the multiple data sources and specific to student learning.
I think the data sources that, so this is the professional practice goal, it's not the student learning goal. The data sources.
But you correlated it to that, that's why I'm asking, you correlated it to Standard 1 on the DESI rubric.
The data sources, I think we've talked about the feedback from the Evaluation Subcommittee being a data source. We've talked about the two-way communication experiences being data sources. We've talked about the Staff and Community Survey as being a data source.
Can you talk about, specific to the student learning? That's what I'm trying to find in there.
So the second, you want me to move into the second?
No, you have it correlated to Component 1.
I don't know that it, I think it more relates to its instructional leadership, where you're creating shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning, so that, you know, working with stakeholders to create that shared vision.
So you have indicator IE on there?
Correct.
I'm sorry to belabor this, but when we go to evaluate and there's a correlation to the DESI rubric, I need to be able to see what I'm going to evaluate in your plan, and I don't see the correlation with that.
I think the, so I'm going to go show you the screenshots here again. And so, the thought from the Evaluation Subcommittee was, this form and this form would be, provide some of the key data points so that the committee, and this is just a sort of a sample here, but the committee would be familiar with the feedback that I've collected as well.
So I will just say that I don't see any student learning part on there, so that would be one part I would just like to see strengthened.
The Staff and Community Survey, you'll recall, it's a really lengthy survey, and there's a lot of questions on there that relate to student learning and the quality and effectiveness of teaching. So I could share that survey again with the committee, but I think you'll find in that survey, there's many, many questions relating specifically to student learning and alignment of curriculum and effectiveness of our educators, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that.
So a survey.
That survey is, you know, I think it was a powerful tool for us when we started, when I came on board back in 2016. And using that survey again, I think it's a good opportunity for us to see, you know, where we were and where we stand now.
So one data point for student learning would be that survey. I think I would like to see more, if you're going to correlate it to the instructional leadership and specific to student learning, and the, I would like to see more data.
I think we can go back to the Evaluation Subcommittee and talk about that as a, you know, as a, to see if there's any additional indicators that might make sense there.
Stephanie, before you continue on, I just want to, I'm trying to take notes as I'm hearing you, and I think what I'm hearing is you're looking for more of a connection of the dots with what is being correlated to, for instance, Component 1, like the School Governance Focus, specifically in terms of instructional leadership. Like looking for a more in-depth connection with what is going to be used to, I just want to make sure that the feedback is, you know, what I'm hearing is what you're trying to communicate. And before you go through any more like points of feedback, I want to give you all the opportunity you can to talk, but I also want to just have you hold on it for a second to see if there's anyone else that wants to jump in, and then I'll afford you the opportunity to.
On the, on 1E, where it says use multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, anything that's talking about safe and secure learning environments is related to student learning, it doesn't necessarily mean curriculum.
So where are you seeing, so that's what I was throwing to Marty, asking him where it was, so.
You're looking at the same, on Component 1. So look, under Action, for example, Action 1 is about safe and secure learning environments. That is an effect on student learning. Holding the coffee houses, meetings with parents and community stakeholders, they have the opportunity to give him feedback on the environment. So that's an effect on, that is evidence in student learning. The things we've heard here in this committee could be considered evidence regarding effects on student learning.
The data from that is just subjective, so the indicator is data-informed decision-making, so using multiple sources. So there is that community engagement as that, as one of the sources, but I don't know, that's why I was asking, I don't know if it goes beyond kind of collecting community info.
Can I just jump in for a second? Yeah, absolutely. I was going to see if Marty had any follow-up with that, but if you want to go ahead.
So I just want to give a little context for how we started with these plans, and I think something that the Evaluation Subcommittee really talked to Marty about was, we need to see how you're assessing, how you're measuring, and what you're going to do with this information. So I think some of that needs to be fleshed out more. And Marty, I think this is the first time we've seen some of Component 3 fleshed out a little bit, but I would like to throw back to you, which kind of jumps on Stephanie's point, I think, is what are you going to do with this information? What does it look like? How are you going to measure it? And what are you going to use that information to move forward, or to do differently, or to change? Or, I would like to hear a little bit more about that piece of it, and just so the whole committee knows, you know, we really did try to address a lot of those concerns. What are you going to do with this information? So if you could maybe talk to that a little bit.
Can you help me just be a little more specific? Is there any particular part of it that you want to know, or just in general?
Well, I think, I think Component 1 and 2, I feel like we, you know, we really sort of pressed you on, you know, what are you going to do, how are you going to measure it, how are you going to assess? This is the first time I'm seeing a little bit more of Component 3. So the District Improvement Plan, I think a little bit more, you know, you might not have the answer right now, but what is it going to look like? How are you going to assess it? What are you going to, you know?
So I think the, you know, the course correction that I would, I think we'll have an opportunity to make would come from that Evaluation Subcommittee, you know. So in terms of, I think it depends on what goal we're talking about, but if you're talking about the School Governance Focus, you know, that, I think the ability to make the course correction based on feedback from the Evaluation Subcommittee would be helpful. The data, I think, the data that is central to this plan relates to that ambitious Staff and Community Survey, it relates to school climate data, it relates to the MCAS questionnaires, it relates to the feedback. I mean, I guess I look at, I think about qualitative data in addition to quantitative data, so there's some qualitative data that I can gather from parent groups through the community conversations, or through the feedback, again, from the Evaluation Subcommittee. I see that as sort of a qualitative data that I can respond to. And then, and then making those, you know, obviously, I think we're always in that mode, you know, as educators, we're always in that mode of continual improvement. The components of the District Improvement Plan, the sort of sub-mollets that you're seeing there are part of that. They're really extracted from the District Improvement Plan, so those. So those, what you're seeing there mostly are items that are rising to the top from that district improvement plan. So some of that, I hope, looks familiar, and I think it's a matter of sort of accelerating our work in some of those areas. So I don't know if that answers your question. I think what I'd be interested in, you know, is sort of collecting some of this feedback, go back to the evaluation subcommittee and see if there's any, you know, kind of refine that, define the answers to the questions that you have, and then bring it back to the committee at your meeting on the 25th, I guess it would be.
I was just wondering, Stephanie mentioned that some of the stuff was like she'd already seen. I didn't know, just because I don't know this answer. Does all this stuff have to be new? Can it be ongoing? Is it okay to include stuff that's already been, or is it progress or ongoing? I'm just curious. I don't know the answer to that.
That would be Marty's idea.
Yeah, I think generically, I mean, we, when we sit down with teachers, I think that that is always a part of the discussion, is sort of, all right, what, you know, what was accomplished last year and how do we build on the successes that you saw that we had last year? So I think it's, that is sort of woven into that continuous improvement approach. It's woven into the cycle. So, and even I think you'll see that with our individual school improvement plans, that the school improvement plans that the principals will bring to you in November, I think you'll see that there are some carryover goals, and there might be new ways to approach the goal, there might be new action steps, but there's definitely some carryover there.
Well, we write two-year goals as educators. Our goals are not one-year goals. They're at least two years.
Right.
Beyond that.
Most educators write two-year goals.
Right. And I thought, I guess, I think for the majority of us, it's our responsibility to show you what tools we're using to get to our goals, but I wouldn't, you know-
So it seems appropriate to-
Your artifacts are your artifacts, right? How you talked to your curriculum committee and decided, you know, what way to go, and you may have dug data out of someplace that you'd want to share, I guess. So maybe, Stephanie, you might not know ahead of time what exactly the data point is, but after the fact, you ought to know.
I mean, I think it's important to, you know, have some stuff that's ongoing. I don't think everything, I was just asking because I wasn't sure if that was something that was mentioned last year. I think it's important to have ongoing goals and then also some new goals. So it looks like that there's both.
Yeah, like an example might be like the sexual abuse awareness training. We did some preliminary training with staff last year, so you recall, we did the online training, we did online training all staff. And so, all right, how do we take it to the next level? What is the, you know, how do you go from good to better or great even? And so the hope would be that we're embedding that further with the full staff training that everybody is going to experience together as a group in January. You know, so I think you're always sort of scaffolding, you're always building on existing foundations, and I hope you see that there's some clear new directions that we want to go in based on the leadership that I'll provide, so.
Stephanie?
I'm not going to belabor that point with some things. I think if you're continuing it, it needs to maybe, you know, if you're taking it to the next step, then on here, I think it would be helpful to identify that next step because this is, those are action steps that are going to be taken. But with that said and continuing on, with your evaluation last year, there were goals that were set that were not met, and so I'm wondering why those were left out. So one in particular was the establishment of a district-wide SEL framework that provides coherence to SEL instruction and programming across the schools. To establish a framework, it would need to be aligned, integrated, implemented in curriculum instruction and assessment. Now, I did see that you added things to the component three that were not in your plan. So some of it was on there, but the goal last year was to establish that framework, and I didn't see, you know, you added some things on this slide that wasn't on your plan, but-
I think we've zeroed in, and you had the chance to chat with our administrative team about this, and so I'd be interested in your feedback. I think we zeroed in on that castle framework as a framework that establishes sort of the standards for SEL growth and, you know, what are the common competencies that we want to nurture and promote in all of our schools? And so that castle framework, we see that as a way to kind of unify and provide a common framework for all of our schools. Yeah, I mean, we certainly have a ways to go on that, Stephanie. I think we're, you know, we're starting from, starting from ground zero, and we recognize, and that's the reason it's in a district improvement plan. We're not there yet, and we've got a ways to go. We recognize that this is a growth area, that we want to align our SEL practices across the district, you know.
So last year's goal was maybe feeling too lofty, and that's why that was-
Yeah, I think we identified that framework, and I think that is going to be a vehicle for us. So, you know, you had the chance to hear from Nicole Allen just passionately talking about her experience at a conference that she was able to attend in Nashville, and it specifically focused on that castle framework as a, as something that can ground district improvement, so.
So I think when your component two, the student learning goal, has the SEL focus, but yet in the actions, it doesn't say anything about castle or the framework. So last year, the actual goal was to establish it. It's been left off now. Now we have SEL as a focus under your student learning goal with no SEL mentioned. So I would like to see in your plan what you're going to do to really move that through on the district improvement plan. I did attend the admin meeting, and I heard a lot from administrators, but I'd like to see on your goal what your leadership will provide to get that moving forward. I was asked for a lot of input from me about what I thought and how I, so I'd like this plan to reflect how you're going to move that to the next, to move it forward. There was also a goal last year of using the radar reports was left out, and we never received any information on that last year. So the goal was evidence of the use of radar reports to ensure that personnel and resources are deployed and cost-effective and in ways that support positive academic and social-emotional outcomes. Now, I know that the other objective was to receive the grant. Now, we didn't get the grant, but the reports weren't used. Is that something you just don't want to do? Is it not useful? It was-
I might look to Tom and see for some help on whether or not those radar reports were used. So just, it was one of the, we've been pretty fortunate with the grants that we've applied for, and we've been, our batting average has been pretty good. We didn't get the radar grant, unfortunately, but the planning that went into that, we spent some time looking at paraprofessional staffing levels, and I think out of that, so in terms of what we did with that, that really was the springboard for the conversation about how can we be more inclusive in special education? That was the springboard, really, that led us towards bringing a recommendation to you to add additional special education staff. That was a really, really important springboard. We didn't get the grant, but I would say that, in fact, the planning that went into that was really critical, and we realized that we were probably too reliant on paraprofessionals and too reliant on pull-out instruction for a special education student. So I think that, you know, that really was an important step forward for us. Yeah, those radar, the radar reports, in fact, I just sent an article to Tom today about how the new SO law, the federal law, is going to be requiring, this might be something for the finance committee to jump around a little bit, but it's going to be requiring districts to pay more attention to resource allocation. So I think that's common. That's going to probably wash over all of us, you know, you as a school committee, us as an administrative team, so.
So my, we never received any information about the radar reports on that, so if it was used to make a decision on special ed, we never received it. So I don't see, I'd like to see more on the instructional leadership part of this in this plan. I think that's really important. I think the student learning piece is really important. This feels very heavy, and it's, there's a lot of positive, heavy on the community engagement, which is really important, but it's also really, that's your strength. That's what we talked about last year, is your strength. I like how this is outlined to get some data from the community, for sure, but this is an annual improvement plan, so I'm looking at the evaluation last year, goals that weren't met, looking at whether they're going to be dropped this year or included. If they're dropped, why are they dropped? And a big part was the student learning, that instructional leadership is mentioned on here, but I'm not seeing it within the plan. So I would just like to see that strengthened in the plan, so that it'll also help move the district improvement plan forward, too, if your goals reflect that piece of it.
I think it's important to note that on the evaluation last year, Stephanie said it's heavy in instructional leadership. I mean, family and community engagement was a needs improvement area. So I think that it's good that there's a lot of things in here that are family and community engagement.
I think what I heard from, especially Karen, as a member of the evaluation subcommittee, is that the importance of sort of two-way conversations. So I think that the community engagement, when I think back, and I think back to the feedback I got from the whole committee, I think back, what my reflection is that a lot of the engagement was sort of information dissemination, which was really key. I think we were at a point where a lot of parents weren't getting critical information. So that was sort of the thrust, maybe, over the last couple of years, and so I think based on particularly whatever from Karen, was how do we take that? How do we make it more of a two-way conversation? So I hope that's what you're seeing in some of the steps that we're taking this year. Again, I'm happy to work further with the evaluation subcommittee. I think we just need, you know, so, yeah, I mean, if that's, these are tough things, obviously, to hash out and change here, but given the opportunity with the evaluation subcommittee, I'm happy to take any feedback that you have.
Yeah, if I can just chime in on that.
I think feedback is good. I just don't want it to become like micromanagement.
If I can just chime in on that, I think what I'm hearing from everyone is there is feedback, some pretty concrete feedback. I've written down a few phrases of things I've heard, some of the things that have already been done, wants to see more of the newer things, fleshing out more of component three, more of a correlation with the instructional leadership. I'm hearing some definite feedback for you to take back, and I think the only comment I wanted to make for myself was, in terms of the improvement plan in general, I think when we look at it, I do want to see it heavier on the things that caused worry and concern last year. So if there were things, well, there were things in the evaluation that were the genuine worries and concerns, so when we talk about what's already being done versus what's new, I want to see it, I think, for me, heavier on the, what are you doing the new to address those concerns? And that would just be my feedback from what I've been hearing around the table. But I think you've got some good feedback from the committee with areas that maybe look to be, you can let me know how you think about it, but I think they've given some good feedback on what your next steps can be in order to bring it back to us.
Can I interrupt just, and this is, I'm sorry, it's not really about the documents, more about the process. In our subcommittee meetings, you both told Marty that this reflected the evaluation, and Karen, you said, "I went through it with the evaluation," and yes, you did what we were asking for. So to have questions now is concerning to me. It's almost like, let's wait till there's a big meeting so we can say it on TV. And another thing, the MASC has a, one of their things on protocols is about not having surprises in meetings, and it's important for the members to communicate with the chair and the superintendent so there aren't surprises in the meeting. So I wish we would be doing that instead of waiting till Karen's on.
Well, let me speak to that, because I know Marty and I have spoken about what, how do we give feedback? And how do we get feedback once the documents come to the meeting? And my feeling on that is, we are a school committee, so we have to meet in a public meeting. That's the way that this is set up, and that is the proper format for all of us to be able to give our feedback. Now, Marty, of course, can email and ask for feedback, and people are welcome to do that, but the proper time and format for it to actually be done is on camera and is in public, because we owe it to the community. We are representing the community. They need to know what we're discussing. So even, it's not meant to be secretive at all. Anything that happens in evaluation sub, I also like it to be brought here because there's a limited number of us in evaluation sub. So even if it's a reiteration of your feedback or something that you're picking up on with the other members of the committee, I think it's important that, once we're all together, this is the time and place, and the appropriate time and place for that all to be discussed.
I think for my purposes, I obviously want you to have efficient meetings, and I want to bring forward a document that's reflective of the concerns of the committee as a body. That's always my goal. And if I can achieve that by receiving feedback, certainly, the committee is subject to the open meeting law, right? And that's important to remember. But if I can achieve what I just described by receiving your feedback regularly, I'm always interested in that, and that way I can put together a document that's reflective of that feedback and so that we can, you know, I'm always interested in spending more time doing the work than writing about the work and talking about the work. And so anytime I have a chance to do that, I would welcome that, you know. So even if, I don't know when our next evaluation subcommittee meeting is, but if anyone has some, I'd love to sort of compile a list of the feedback of the individual committee members and see where the commonalities are, and then put together, if it needs another iteration, I'm always happy to do that, you know that. And so if that can happen, make that evaluation subcommittee meeting more efficient potentially, and then make this, you know, your discussions here more efficient, and hopefully simultaneously develop a product that is, you know, up to what you're looking for.
Armon?
Yeah, just, I guess, a few thoughts. You know, the first is, yeah, I kind of agree with Ryan to a point about the process. From an evaluation subcommittee perspective, there was a process. A lot of time was spent between the members of that committee and Marty to come up with what I think is a document. So to come back here and try and rehash every single line of it seems a little counterintuitive to me. I kind of like respect the work of the evaluation subcommittee because we don't all have time to, like, rehash all of those. The bigger concern I have is most organizations, at least in the business world, anything more than five to six actionable goals becomes micromanagement. And since when we're all here to have Marty succeed, I guess my concern is, are these too many goals to be attainable, relevant, pretty much the whole SMART process of, you know, specific, measurable, attainable, you know? And are we setting you up for success in these goals, you know, that's being set? And again, I totally respect and thank the evaluation subcommittee for the work they did, because obviously, a lot of work went into this.
Karen?
I just want to make a comment on that. So we really only have three goals, and, you know, we had talked about in the subcommittee. I know it's hard because you don't know what the discussions are that went on in the subcommittee. So this year, it was laid out differently, and that was by Marty's choice. He, we actually commented on the fact that it looked different, and he wanted to make it more specific for us, and he wanted to lay out the actions and the intended outcome. So just so you know, that's not the subcommittee recommending that, that was Marty's desire. So there's really only, if you look at it, three goals, the three components with a focus, and then some actions that he will be taking in order to achieve those goals. So we did feel like, and we actually said to him, you know, by doing this and going through this whole process, we are hopefully setting you up for success. That was the intent. So I just want to be clear that, you know- So I just want to be clear that, you know, I don't think this is micromanagement, I don't think that this is, you know, setting him up for failure. This was a document that, you know, Marty worked really hard with the evaluation subcommittee to really try to address all the concerns. You know, obviously, I, you know, we didn't, we can't get everything that everyone is thinking in their head, and, you know, that's why we have the full subcommittee, I mean, the full committee to meet. So, you know, I just need to lay that out there to make it clear.
And Stephanie, one final?
And when you say that, when you're commenting on the subcommittee doing a good job on this, this is not the subcommittee's work. We have not had a subcommittee do the superintendent's plan before. This was a, this came out of last year's evaluation, so this document is Marty's document. If they gave input or not, it doesn't fall on them. So saying that Karen said one thing and that everything was included, this does not fall on that subcommittee. This is Marty's plan. So unfortunately, when you talk about surprises, it is an, it is open meeting. We have to have this discussion out here. It's the plan, it's something that we have to approve, and, you know, there are concerns. Now, how in-depth you go on them, and you go back and have a revision, but this is, you know, ideally, you're presented with a plan, and there might be a couple of things, and you send it back, but this plan, I have some great concerns. This is the first time it's presented to the committee, and we have to discuss it. Micromanaging, this is Marty's plan. If anything, he had elicited the feedback from the subcommittee on it, but at the end of the day, this is his plan, no one's micromanaging. And what I'm hearing from Marty is, he wants to bring the subcommittee back to do another draft. I would recommend giving it to Marty, taking the feedback and just coming back, so that, you know, I heard Bronwyn say it, too, not to micromanage. No one is trying to. I would love to see a plan that I like right in front of me and say, "Yes, let's go." And that has happened in the past, but not with this plan. So the micromanaging, as Marty keeps asking the subcommittee to go back through it again. If we want to get rid of that part, then we can, you know, talk about maybe just having him do it and not bringing it to sub. I don't know how people feel.
And I think I would just say to Marty that I think we've given, we've been very clear, I think, in giving you good feedback and letting you know that it's okay if the first round is not the polished finished product. Like, the expectation is for a high-quality commitment to the work, but it's completely acceptable to have it looked at amongst the whole committee, and it's totally fine. We don't expect it perfectly wrapped up with a bow on it, and I think we talked about that, and given you that feedback, that that is, it's not our expectation that it's going to come here completely polished. It's important to get the feedback. I think you heard the feedback, and you're wanting to move forward with what you heard.
Yeah, I just need some clarity from the committee on, you know, the feedback that needs to be incorporated into the next iteration, so that's a little unclear to me right now, and so we can kind of hash that out at the evaluation subcommittee.
Anything else that, Melanie, I hadn't heard from you at all, so I would love to, I didn't see your hand, if it was up, but I would love for you to give your input.
Not at all, I'm getting my thoughts together.
Okay, sure.
We are not here to rubber stamp the work of any subcommittee. That's why it's brought to us for discussion. That's why, that opens things up for discussion. Getting feedback is not a bad thing. I think it's disappointing that when feedback is given, we have jumps to micromanaging, doing things in public for an agenda, and surprise, there's no surprise, there's no surprise here, this is what you do, you discuss this. This is what we're charged with doing. And that's very disappointing to me, that that assumption is made when somebody's trying to give feedback. He can take her feedback or not, she obviously put a lot of time and effort into finding things that she felt could be addressed. There's nothing wrong with that, like you said, Beth, going back to the table. So you present it, and the next thing on here is a recommended motion, and we just raise our hands and approve it? That's not what we're here for. It's good feedback, it's feedback that can be taken or not taken, it's feedback. I think all feedback is good, you can do what you want with it, but I don't think that we should be jumping to these assumptions that there's some sort of an ulterior motive or, you know, labeling something. We're here to come up with the best plan that we can come up with, and we should listen to everybody's feedback, and we should not raise our hands and approve this the first time we're actually getting to discuss it. We want to make it the best that it can be. So I appreciate if anybody has feedback on this, and then we go back to the table, make it better, or we're not.
Thank you for that, Melanie. I think all very well-intended points and good points. So that being said, we will not move with the recommended motion to approve, and we'll look for the next steps, and give the specific feedback can be gathered, I heard it, so we'll go ahead and move on to, unless Marty, you had anything else that you wanted to ask specifically, but I think you're good with finding out what that specific feedback is, and then we can move on to new business, which is just the memorandum of understanding with the Sandy Hook Promise, and Marty, I'll let you explain.
Okay, you have in your packet, this is something we're proud of, there's only, that I'm aware of, just through four districts in this area that have identified the see-something, say-something anonymous reporting system as a potential tool to enhance student safety. And so we have been working with the Sandy Hook Promise organization that puts out this tool, it's an online, it's a reporting tool, where student, staff, or community members could alert us to safety concerns that they might have anonymously, and it can be done via text, it can be done via an online platform, it can be done via an app on your smartphone, it can be done via a phone call on an old-school phone. And so the first step in implementing this see-something, say-something reporting tool is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Sandy Hook Promise organization. And so in your packet is the MOU. It has been reviewed by Attorney Domenello, he made a few minor adjustments to it. The Sandy Hook Promise organization was comfortable with the changes that he had recommended, really a minor change relating to clarifying Sandy Hook Promise's commitment to protect student privacy. So the MOU is in your document, or it's in your packet. If it's acceptable to the committee, then we're in a go position to work further with the Sandy Hook Promise organization. If you are interested in learning more about that anonymous reporting system, I do have a slide deck where I could pull up a couple of key slides if you have any questions about how it all works. So the MOU is there for your consideration. It would need the signature of the school committee chair authorized by the committee as a whole.
So did anyone have any questions, concerns, or feedback for Marty, knowing that you've, like, looked over the MOU? If none, we can go ahead with the recommended motion. Do you want to read it?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the memorandum of understanding between the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation and the Long Meadow Public Schools, and authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding.
I'm sorry, was that you who ran? Okay. I thought I heard it, but I wasn't sure. Any further follow-up or questions? If not, we can come to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes. And the last final thing on our agenda tonight is the anonymous letters discussion, which Marty and I have been talking about all week, so we won't have any discussion on it this evening. You do see that you have an anonymous letter in your packet. It is not official correspondence. We've talked about how we view anonymous letters as a committee. We have some language on our website, and then Marty has discussed with me three of our policies that touch on anonymous letters, and then what we feel like we should be practicing. So we are recommending that Policy Sub take a look at simultaneously the website, the three policies, and what our intent is with anonymous letters, and it's our belief that anonymous letters, the website says that they're completely disregarded, some of the policy language says that they're completely disregarded, but Marty and I have discussed that we feel that we need to be clear that they're not just generally disregarded. There are two instances where we feel like they would be useful, and that's strictly in terms of safety, in terms of any one particular student or teacher in the district, a safety issue, and our surveys should, you know, we need to have that tool to be anonymous. So after having those discussions, we felt like policy in our website should really, everything should be cohesive, and we should, it should reflect what we're practicing as a school committee. So we will be moving that over to Policy Sub, and hopefully, everyone sees the logic behind that. So there's no actual discussion on that, other than to let you know that we feel Policy Sub is the best place for that to start right now, and then it will come back to the committee.
Do you have the three policies?
I can forward you the email that Marty had included them in. Yep.
It's in the K section.
Okay.
It's a lot of K letters. So, no executive session scheduled for this evening, so I'll just look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned, and thank you, and have a good night.